We'll go right into the roll call. Carol?
Vice Mayor Dick G.
Here.
Councilmember Dan Landrum.
Here.
Councilmember Robert Spalding.
Here.
Councilmember Amy Speed.
Here.
Mayor Chris Howley.
Here. Ordinances, we have one, and this will be the second reading. The first reading was done at a public meeting, so we're absolutely fine in doing this one here. And that will be...
2017-11.
Let me get to where I can read it. Ordinance 2017-11. An ordinance to amend ordinance number 2017-07 entitled the FY 2017-2018 budget ordinance to provide for certain additional revenues and expenditures in this budget year. Does the council need an explanation from the town manager or finance person on this since we've already done it? Or do we...
I guess probably not.
Okay. Boyd or Carol?
We have several adjustments that we're making. One of the most significant relates to the getting the safety grid for firefighters and the budgeting for that. We're also moving $20,000 over to the needed replacement fund to keep that available for future use for additional swap loader system that we weren't able to get to, that we had hoped to this year. This will go around. The library fund, you know, we've restructured the operation of the library to, going to compliance with state laws, so we're moving budgeted funds from general fund over to the special library fund that's now been established. So is that zeroed out now? Do we go to the general ledger? The library doesn't show up?
Not yet.
But I mean, it's zeroed out though.
I am gearing so that January the 1st, we can switch everything over to the new fund, the new process, and at that point, we will move the current expenditures over into that fund also.
But it won't be zeroed out because in our year, our financial year, we would have, yeah, we would have.
But all that will be moved over.
That one we move to.
It will be accounted for later, so that it's all in one place.
Can we do that though? Because we're not actually forming it until January 1st.
Right, but it's not a problem.
Okay, alright, I just want to make sure. Thank you. Good question.
And the other is remaining funds for the water projects that are underway now that weren't expended last year. Projects spanned one right here, accounting for the funds to complete those projects.
And that's out of the separate distinct water fund?
Correct.
Can I get a motion?
I'm going to make the rule.
Second.
Discussion. Ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have discussion items. First on the discussion list is MAC slash public, I'm sorry, dash slash public slash private partnership. Is this you, Dick?
Angie.
Close.
Matter of fact, I'd like to ask Phil, should I actually probably remove myself from the table?
Are you a member of the committee?
No.
In light of that comment, then possibly yes. This is a PT rated meeting.
Well, it's probably better to try to sway the participant. Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you. I'm sort of hampered. Thank you for being here. For those that haven't known, this is Angie Landrum, and she and some other folks have are finishing the process of reaching for the 501(c)(3), and they are interested in, as it says, some nature of public-private partnership built into the MAC beyond just being a fundraising group for MAC and the town. So I thought the best thing to do, if you get, or come in and kind of give you guys a rundown of what they have in mind and what they see as their overall goal in terms of how this comes to fruition, and then we can have an initial discussion about what the council is willing to entertain, and then definitely we'll have some idea of what kind of work we need to do from there.
As you know from attendance at the town council meeting back in February, a significant portion of the mountain residents support saving the Silver Mountain Grammar School, we appreciate the council's vote to spend money to fix the major problems on the original part of the building. This has inspired people to do more. We've had wonderful turnout at the Silver Mountain Community Forum meetings, and the discussion has been focused on the MAC. And there's another meeting coming up Monday at 6:00, so those of you who want to come. Through these discussions, we have learned that there's not only support for raising money to sprinkle the remainder of the building, but also support for managing the programs and events that take place there. Over the last few months, we have organized a new non-profit board and paying financial commitments from people that are passionate about saving the MAC. We would like to officially begin fundraising in January. What we need now from the town is a written agreement so that we can move forward.
So you have the 501(c)(3) in place?
We have done our part, having a written agreement from the town.
So your organization is tottered and established?
Yes, it's hard when you have a board already.
Have you submitted what your proposal is to operate or anything? Have you had, we had a discussion?
We've had a meeting relative to just general, in general terms, what their goal would be, is whether it would be simply to be a fundraising organization for MAC and the town, or if they would want to actually take over the operations and which is operated, which is the latter is my understanding. So that's something we haven't done before. If it's a matter of fundraising agreement like we did with the Library Foundation, pretty straightforward. We have looked and spent some time looking at what a lease agreement for that facility would look like, and what we could do to structure that. As far as the transition of the MAC from the town to this organization, while that prospect has been part of discussions, it's never really been decided that that's something that council would or would not support. So that gets us to the, we need to know council's favor before we're able to, so perhaps that brief...
Probably appropriate way to move forward is allow you, or ask you to meet with them and come up with some sort of agreement so we can understand what... At which I'd strongly support, and we talked about it before, allowing 501(c)(3) to operate it, but I think we need to continue to financially support them in the discussion, at some level, in the discussions we had previously. You know, we talked about kind of a five-year plan where we drill, you know, kind of drill down our support of the staff and the operational costs over there till we get to about $30,000, but then we're always at least contributing and helping up that end. Can we still do that in this scenario?
We could structure it that way. One of the things I've looked at in terms of a lease agreement is how that could be built in to a lease agreement, where really it's more of a landlord tenant scenario as it is the town contributing directly to a 501(c)(3). So if we're covering utilities, things like that, and the janitorial, all of those things, and we have this amount of money that we're covering on an ongoing basis as the owners of the property and other funds that they would be in not after.
And that's just my opinion is that I'm a weak mayor, so you got to get the rest of the council out of this.
And again, that's as far as we can really go until we knew what the council...
I suggest we release both of negotiations or agreements so we can understand what's in that agreement.
I anticipate this will be a thorough and lengthy discussion and not just the financial and the program and the...
When the council should be involved in that discussion?
I probably am.
Good. Is that okay with y'all? But is that okay with...
Yes.
Okay. Mar, are you on?
I'm unsure what I do say. Am I on board with what?
What's happening here?
The top facilitator discussions. The request for...
I don't know. I don't know if I'm on board.
Because we haven't seen the agreement yet.
I haven't seen an agreement. I certainly wouldn't work for a group without a contract. I have to protect my staff and myself.
Okay.
I want to protect the original intent of what the Mount Orange Community Center was vision and vision has. I don't know. I've met with the committee, or most of the committee, to explore that further because I don't know yet what their end goal for the MAC is, and I don't know whether that's something that I would agree with, the town would agree with. There's a lot yet to do.
But I think a lot of those answers become, will our answer if we have some sort of agreement that details those things out?
That's correct. But also, that is facilitated by knowing council's desire in terms of those things programmed. Do we want to stipulate how the facility is used and is operated in terms of what needs to go on there if we're going to relinquish what we're doing to another organization?
That's part of the discussion. Yeah, I don't think we need to turn that till we get everybody in the same room to figure that out, but we also have some, legally, we have something we have to devote to in the purchase agreement of that property.
That it can't be used to operate a school.
Right.
That's pretty much it.
But where do you find school? I mean, if you're teaching art, if you're teaching, where are you using that?
That's what we're doing now.
Yeah.
So I see that as an issue, but at the basic level is that are we saying that if we enter into something like that, it would be for the intent purpose of operating MAC in at least very close proximity to its identity today?
That's true.
Okay. So can we, do we have to put this special committee, or can we just ask you to do that?
Sneak.
Y'all comfortable with, are you comfortable with Dick and the direction we're going on?
Is there any delay in not getting this accomplished before the end of the year? We're taking advantage of donations this year?
Oh, I mean, there's no way it's not making it happen.
Okay.
No way.
Are you familiar with McCoy Property and how it's similar to what you're thinking about?
Yes. Yes, I'm getting a lease agreement, an agreement with the town. The main thing is when we go to start fundraising, no one's going to give us money if there's no guarantee with the community or parent in the building. So that's what we need to agree on. And we would really like to start in January, but so all I'm missing is that piece of paper in the town.
Excellent. So you're comfortable with the direction we're going?
Yes.
Okay. Everybody okay with that?
Well, I would like to... Let's clarify on this January thing, because if they're looking for us to provide some clearance by January, I'm not even close to be able to make that commitment. So I mean, if it affects your fundraising, it's going to have to affect your fundraising pretty quick.
Yeah, I heard you saying we would like to...
We'd like to, but we can't do anything still.
One of the things that I think we need to consider and build the way in here, but if we're going to lease that facility and we are going to change how we as a town utilize it, and as much as we won't be utilizing it, we'll be leasing it to someone else, I think it's very well across the level that would require a mandatory referral to the planning commission.
Yes, if it's not the town that is operating the facility, it would require a listing and a proper planning to see what they would approve.
Can we do that without them agreeing? So those two things are going on at the same time?
Sort of makes it difficult for them to understand what use it's going to be until you have them.
Or if we go to them and say we're looking to lease the facility to someone else, isn't that all? They just have to rubber stamp that if...
No. Rubber stamp is probably not the word. Because it's already the asset of the town, it's right now, and that asset of the town is going to be at least considered as to whether there are other uses that could be done with that facility. You're also talking about how it's the lease arrangement would be done, is it some sort of that type of lease here?
So that's the command?
Nonprofit. If it's a nonprofit location, there could be specific donations to nonprofits by town taxpayers here in a specific amount. We want to go that way down here, there's a statutory division that all the losses have to be done, but you got to have...
There's a process that's involved.
And you have a constituency in the community.
Yes.
It has to be addressed and that should be...
You're also talking about dissolving a department.
Yeah, that's right. Angie, so you were now seeing the frustration of a lot of us entering the government on the slow work and stuff, but we will get on it as quick as we can, and we'll have Dick have his time missions with Boyd, and then come back to us with that. But I think from what I've heard around the table, everybody's in full agreement and would be excited to see this.
I think it's a concept that we have to great, that we're wanting to look at and investigate, but, and I think Bo is right, we have not said, this is what we, the notice said, this is what we want to do at this point.
Let me ask you another question. This is going to take a time period. We have a lot of $300,000 to fix in front of that building and theater. Is it something we want to wait so they have a say in where that $300,000 goes, or how that's spent, or is something we need to move ahead? Or do we continue to do what we committed to do? Okay, okay.
And line with difficulty what happened to the building? We still don't have that, but, I mean, just...
Whatever. Nothing.
Nothing.
So what is going to help speed it that in the pipeline?
I don't, I don't... Those other things can go on continuously though.
The last thing we do is change gears on that project.
Okay. I just want to understand, because that wasn't brought up if we were going to, I know we had to start.
No matter how this washes out, that project needs to go forward, and as soon as it's back in our hands, then we're off the running. We just need to get the state fire marshals approved and we can start on it.
So basically...
So what are those roadblocks right now? Is it state fireworks?
Well, there's this back and forth on them submit plans, they're reviewed, and then they come back with remarks and comments and direction on what they need changed. And then often those changes are made, they go back, and other times, the architect or engineer looks at and says, no, you're not, you're not looking at this the way we intend you, this is what we're going to do, not what you think we're going to do. So there's a, there's just a continuous process until everybody's satisfied with what's on paper, and then the fire marshal signs off. And that's, that's what we want to have.
What is that timeline now? Like in the interest of how slowly these budgets, I mean, I would love to see...
Timeline on this, or is it an improvement project?
On the original proposal. So your involvement with MAC?
I don't know what I have to follow. I think we have to see the proposal.
Can we shoot for six months then? Having something back?
One thing I'm with the program.
High six months.
That's probably a reasonable...
If we can do it faster, I'd like to have it faster, but I'd like to have it at eight. I'd like to be at a point within six months where we can vote on it, it'll be done, have it gone to the planning commission, and we're...
Dick?
I think the...
Can you tell me, can you tell me exactly what it is you want to know?
I'm sorry, what?
Can you explain to me what it is exactly you want to know or discuss that you don't already know already?
Well, I don't know that it's a question of what I want to know. I think that as far as we're considering eliminating a department of the town, that's not something we can just do overnight. I mean, that's, there is a constituency within the community that uses and supports the MAC. So I think this, your proposal has got to be presented to them, and they've got to have an opportunity to comment on that, object to it or support it, one way or however it goes. We have had the planning commission develop, and I guess the last component, and it's not the least important, are the programs. And the question is whether or not the town is going to impose programs, or we're just going to turn over program and get what you are offering. And I think that's a question that needs to be discussed within the town.
I don't, I don't think getting to an agreement phase is going to take that long. Unfortunately, it then falls subject to our meeting schedules, and when we have to vote on it, and then getting the planning commission and meeting the mayor for meeting schedules...
There's a process of doing the planning business.
Right.
It's not going to happen.
As frustrating, right.
It's not going to happen.
Correct.
Well, just to reassure you, the programs, we don't have a disagreement on what the programs that are going to happen. We want to continue what's happening and grow it. We're not going to put in something totally different. This is to support the MAC programs that are...
I guess, I tend to be goal oriented, so when I said six months, I'd like to have this thing totally to bed by the end of the day. If it happens sooner, great, but I think that's giving board enough time for everybody to move on and get through it. Hopefully it'll only happen two years.
Another component is the centennial. We were hoping to use some, hopefully the newly renovated sections, so as far as setting a goal time, I'd like to see us...
Gather them well before then. So we're all okay with Boyd and Dick getting together to put something together to bring back to us so we can understand exactly what we're going forward with? If you like it, move it to the planning commission if they're okay. If they're okay with it, come back to us and get it done. Everybody okay with that? Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. And before, I know he's not at the table, but I want to give Dan significant credit for this, because this is something I think Boyd and I tried to get done before you got on the council, to no avail, and I think this is very good for you to step up and do what you're doing. So thank you and the guy you're sleeping with very much for their work.
I will reiterate that if this is a model, that we decide it's appropriate for this kind of activity, I think it needs to be investigated as a model for how it's going to work as well.
Right. In perfect sense. Yeah, and then that's why it's got to be done right too, because we haven't done this model before. I agree. Next, SSVC resolution review.
I asked for that to be able to be attended, because I have a conversation that I had with a citizen after the, what did they call that, the Monday night meeting?
The forum?
The forums, community forums at the high school. And during the course of that conversation, there was some, I don't know how to describe it, but some consternation expressed in the audience about the building issue. And I didn't quite pick up at the time what was going on, and because the building issue from my personal point of view is not nearly the most important issue in this whole thing at this point. Obviously, it has to be addressed at some point, but that's not where I've been concentrating my concerns. So after the meeting, Phil and I were sitting and just talking still on the stage. Chris, you had walked in and sat with us, and we were approached by a member of the community who began trying to explain what this building issue was and where, and I don't know how to describe it any more completely than that. We didn't ask for any explanation, he just came up and began to talk about this particular issue and why it seemed to be such a problem in the meeting. And in the course of that conversation, she went on to make what I don't believe was intended to be an accusation, but in fact, it was an accusation, that we, the town, or one of us, in particular, one of us, because the accusation was that somebody, somebody had altered or modified the ordinance without telling anybody else. You know that one, on the run. And I guess I was...
Afters was approved by the council?
Afters was approved by the council. I have to tell you, was, you know, this, this issue has created a fair amount of angst, it's fair to say, and a fair amount of barks on back and forth, and that's fine. I don't have any problem with that. But when someone, a citizen of the town, comes and confronts me as a member of the council and suggests that council has broken the law, which is basically what they infer, I think that goes, that's gone a little bit too far. And so I asked us, I asked Bo to get the documents and the paper trail that supports the action we took, and make sure that it was what we think it is, and what the sequence of events were dealing with the exclusion, and that's the issue, the exclusion of the And go on record as saying that whatever claim is being made that we have acted in a part of it needs to be confronted, and the truth told. And that's, that's what I'm about. You were there, so I guess that's, did I...
Did your investigation reveal that the resolution was changed after?
Well, what Bo has put in front of us is a copy, are copies of the original ordinance, which I...
It's actually a resolution.
I'm sorry, I'm not the word, the resolution, that informed the committee, and minutes of subsequent meetings, or actually, one of the meetings was before the... We just need to get the timeline right, satisfy ourselves that everything is where it should be, and I believe it is. I just can't believe there's a problem there. And I got to tell you, I just greatly resent being accused of, this thing has gotten heated. I understand that, but I think this conduct has gone too far. And the suggestion was that this is not just one person making this claim, there is more than one person making this claim. And so I'm not a fan of things due to this approach, and I think that's where we are. And I think we need to...
Are you referring to this highlighted?
Well, the original resolution is in the package.
Is it given to them?
And that was dated 12/12. And all that does, I say all that does, what it does is establish the citizens advisory, within the citizens advisory committee allows us to establish the SVCC, SSVC. It makes no mention of...
What did they say was changed in this? What?
The exclusion of the acquisition, if I'm going to get the right word, acquisition of the buildings.
But it's not, it's not in here? They saying it was taken out?
That's why I asked this resolution to be included in your package. The claim is that this resolution has been altered, and I don't find any evidence that this resolution has been altered. Now, there are, there are comments in subsequent meetings, in minutes.
Is this the one we signed?
Yes, sir, it is.
Has it been altered for anything we did in that meeting?
It has not been altered.
I'm still lost on this thing.
Well, lost, I am. I'm confused too, but I, that doesn't change my, my level of anger, frankly. There's nothing in subsequent meetings that suggests, I mean, there are two comments in subsequent meetings. I think I have the timeline, that the building question, the acquisition of the building question will be handled separately because it is a legal, it will require legal assistance. And I remember that conversation.
Yeah, I remember it too. And that was in, that's what's highlighted on the February 13th minutes?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, and then there's another set of minutes that confirms that. Now, I don't, I don't see anything in that review that suggests anything in progress or illegal occurring. And if there's agreement here... or illegal occurring. And if, and if there's agreement here, and I'll go further. I don't even think there's anything there to suggest or infer or imply in any way suggests that this town, that this council operated outside of the law.
Have you looked at, the, the documents that are involved are pretty simple on here. You initially in December, on December the 12th, were considering the creation of a school system viability committee. The school system viability committee was a subcommittee of the citizens advisory committee for the town, which is already in the town code. There was a specific discussion about how long the terms of those individuals that were involved in the school system viability committee should be there. And that was for a term of two years, basically, for December 31st of 2018. That was the discussion that occurred during the meeting. We can get the minutes. The only thing I didn't see were the minutes here for 12/12. You might want to at least make sure you got a copy of those. That body was not appointed until February the 13th of 2017. And during that public meeting, there was a reference in the discussion about whether the SSVC would be studying the issue of school property or buildings. And Mayor Howley at that point in time said that the issues related to this area would be handled through the town attorney. That is not a big issue insofar as this is a litigation matter from the beginning, a litigation matter that would be involved with the school board's attorneys who had already sent off an email at the very beginning of this dispute asserting that there would be an issue about property. That created the potential litigation matter in this case from the very beginning. And that discussion is the reason that you didn't have the school buildings as an issue at front for this viability committee to deal with. That was discussed during a public meeting. And as such, I'm thinking that what you're trying to get in this process is someone trying to assert that there's a, some type of violation of an open meetings issue, but it was discussed in a public meeting.
So the answer is no?
No.
Wow. It's hard to know where to start. First, there's no charges. We're talking about a total straw man. Anybody can say anything at any time and that doesn't make it be, that doesn't make it exist. Somebody has, someone has to go to have an attorney to level charges.
No, I disagree with that. I'm suing with the town attorney. And a citizen accuses the town council of breaking the law.
That citizen here today?
That is not a straw man by no stretch of the.
Who was it? Well, I don't want to bring it up.
Second. We're, we're discussing this, right? I mean, we can talk about it.
Absolutely.
It feels like I'm against a fire hose here, that there's such an agenda being pushed. And that agenda is okay for us all to have agendas. We come here, but we, it seems like we pretended there's not one. And this is yet another example. If every citizen, if, if every, if the conversations that I've had with every citizen made me get offended and want to bring something to the council to talk about that conversation, I should be ridiculed for that. If this, I'm not done. Please.
But we don't really, even close to a agreement. So no, we're not going to.
This, it's not just about minutes. Carol does a fine job with the minutes. There's also, you can read the transcripts, Chris, and I've got them in front of me. If we can go back and look at the transcripts where you specifically said, I have instructed the committee to not look at the buildings. I can also go down to another set of minutes.
So, so we just.
What?
Well, you just.
Let me finish when I. Well, I'm not finished accusing you of something. I could go back to the, I could go farther down to another set, a transcript of the minutes where you also say, we hold the option to take these buildings back to the committee at any point and have them look at that. And I'm thinking, okay, that's good faith. I trust that.
We, right.
We as a council.
Right.
I would also like to ask, Phil, I mean, now, anything I say to you, you're smarter than me and you're an attorney. And I, and I don't want to argue with an attorney because I'll lose. But you're talking about the buildings, you're talking about this as if from the beginning there was potential litigation.
Yes, sir.
You said three meetings ago, what chance is there for litigation? I'm sitting at, at the dais there and I'm, and I just went.
I asked the question?
Yes. You said, who says there's going to be any litigation? Him.
Okay.
It's, it's, the arguments are being made conveniently.
How is that sale again to anything?
The arguments are being made conveniently to push an agenda. And on top of that, two, Dr. Friedel and, and Chris apparently sat down with a pundit, with a columnist, to try to sell him on the idea of this being a good idea. That's, did he make that up or did that really happen?
Fake news.
You did not talk?
No, I have.
You and Dr. Friedel didn't sit down and talk with?
Right, but you.
No, did, did that happen?
Will you let me respond or not? Just go ahead and keep accusing and then I'll respond to each individual.
I'm trying to make a case for the fact that it is understandable for a citizen to ask the questions they're asking.
But you're starting every one of these questions with a fact. Did you sit with this guy to sell him on this?
Is that a fact?
No, it is not.
You started with an accusation though.
I'm sorry. You started with an accusation that wasn't fact.
It's been constant from the first day.
So you didn't sit down, you did not sit down with Roy Exum?
No, you said to sell him on this.
Did you sit down with Roy Exum with Dr. Friedel and have a conversation?
I did. I got a call from Dr. Friedel who said he was meeting with Roy Exum. Would you join us? And I said absolutely.
Does that feel like maintaining neutrality as it also says in this resolution?
Why wouldn't it be? Why wouldn't it be? What, what makes it say that it's neutral or not neutral?
Let me call a timeout here just a minute because what I, I thought I made my comments when I began this story, saying that I understand how heated the discussions are. I can deal with that. Then what I can't deal with is being accused of breaking the law. That is, that is the component of this discussion that, that put me over the fence on it. It's, it's, it's fine to accuse us of being unbiased, or biased, either one, I guess. It's fine to accuse us of, of acting improperly. It's, it's fine for disagreeing with what we're trying, accusing us of being an advocate for this thing when we're, when I don't believe we are. It is a different thing, entirely different thing to me, to be accused of breaking the law. And I, and that is, that is the difference in this discussion. Why I asked for this issue to be put on.
That person's not here though to, to perhaps say, I'm sorry if it came across that way. I don't even know who that person is.
I think, I think I said in my comments that it may not have been intended to be an accusation, but it came that way because it accused the town council of breaking the law and that. That's too far. I'm sorry.
But you, you just said that it might not have been intended that way.
I don't care if it was intended that way or not.
Did it sound like we were being accused of changing the resolution after it was passed?
At least the statements was that the resolution included information here about the operation of school buildings and at some point that that was changed.
That one person, that one person changed the resolution?
And that, that document is the, the document you got here of.
So we, we've cleared up that the resolution wasn't changed.
It was not.
All right. So we cleared off that that was a false accusation. You have every reason to be angry. And I agree. Dr. Friedel, did you call me and ask me to attend that meeting with Roy Exum?
Did.
Did I in any way during that meeting promote of for or against that, what was going on?
Other than answering his questions, truthfully, no.
Thank you. Why did he call the meeting?
Roy sent me an email and asked if I would be interested in having coffee, if I and Mayor Howley would be interested in having coffee with him. And he replied, and I wrote back and said, yes, I'll arrange it. It was Roy's invitation.
Thank you. We'll have you up in a second on the next topic, but this might take a while.
So here.
What else have you accused me of? I'll go through them.
I'm sorry, Chris. I don't want to accuse anybody of anything.
Well, I'm happy to answer. Anybody who's contacted me and said, hey, I want to have coffee and sit down and talk about this, I have.
I'm going to read you the words. I'm going to read you the words. These are words from Roy Exum from yesterday.
I've read his article.
No, this is not his article. This is an email.
No.
But then I sat down and had a long conversation with Chris Howley and John Friedel. It is amazing how truth and facts can make us change our minds. They really showed me the light. They made me a believer. I have no skin in the game, but I champion the underdog, the unincorporated, those who have a long time on their own. This is him writing back and saying what happened when you guys got together.
Saying that after hearing the facts, not saying he was sold on an idea.
Okay.
That is half the problem is that there's fact and fiction out there.
I got to tell you too, he's written, he's written about three or four, maybe five about this. I'm not sure his facts are always accurate. I mean, he's an interesting guy, but I'm not sure.
And his articles have gone 180 degrees.
Absolutely. So we shouldn't be, if we are neutral, as we said in our notes, and I can read you the notes where we talked about the importance of that.
Right.
You know how many reporters I've talked to since this began?
How many?
Zero.
Y'all may I have? Six or seven? I've talked to anybody who's wanted to talk about the issue, pro or against. I've encouraged meetings with pro and against because the more information I can gather from folks, I think the better decision I can make.
What, what do we do when a citizen accuses us of breaking the law?
If it's, I think it's a pretty simple answer. You say.
It may be.
Yeah.
But I don't, I don't come to a conclusion based on trying to know, knowing before whether it was intentional or not. I don't know if it was intentional or not.
If a citizen accused me or Chris or anybody at this table, Boyd, anybody of breaking the law, I would say, if you believe that's true, you should take your case to an attorney because that's.
That's why I asked still to be.
A citizen, you would ask the citizen to take the case to the attorney. I think what you don't do, and I apologize, because I love you, Dick, I don't think you bring it here and talk about this like we're in the sixth grade.
I do.
We can't talk about it anywhere else. Because we're also accused of breaking sunshine laws all the time.
So therefore you don't bring every matter and have these kinds of discussions. This isn't adulting in my opinion.
So what you're saying is sometimes there's some information you may not want to put out in the public?
No, not even on the same.
Well, that's what you just said.
No, it's not, not even.
Well, don't bring it here. Don't discuss it.
I think this is serious.
Did I miss that or?
I wouldn't have brought it to the table if I didn't.
I would like to note from Dan, is this an illegal thing that you feel like is illegal?
Okay, so. Have I said that?
I'm asking.
No.
And so you feel comfortable with this?
I feel comfortable with that, sure. But what I think we.
If they were accusing you of this, and I don't know who they were accusing of this.
Maybe they were. I wasn't there, but I know who you're talking about.
But you didn't.
They said one person.
Did they say who?
No, did not say who. The accusation was clear in plain that one person on the town council had acted unilaterally and had changed this ordinance to exclude the.
Schools.
Schools, the acquisition of the building. That's as clear as I can.
So we're all in agreement on this?
Right.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
So when accusations come up, you're here to defend each of us equally, right? While that accusation was lodged against Dan or Amy or anybody, you're here to defend us equally?
I am here to defend the town of Signal Mountain and its elected officials. I am here to give you advice to try to make sure that you do things in proper manner. And then the body of the council has to make decisions on what you use town resources for.
And I believe unintentionally or not, that that has our reputation and our truthfulness has been accused. Although I wouldn't be talking with them.
I agree.
Now, I don't know what we do. That's the next.
The next aspect of the question was.
Oh, I don't know what we do. Whether we just drop it and say, fine, or do we invite that person to come in and, and explain her.
Her charges.
And, and, and clear the air.
You're transcribing. We've got a camera here. Do you agree where we all signed off on these minutes, that that statement's correct also?
That Mayor Howley informed us that the SSV had been told not to look at the building? Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
I believe that Mayor Howley informed us that the SSV had been told not to look at the buildings. I have asked also on record, also on video, at more than one meeting, when did the council make that decision?
We all talked about it. It was at that meeting.
It's on record.
We all talked about it. It was, it's nothing different. It is nothing different than just what happened on the last item where we said, hey, Dick, do you want to be the liaison for this? Okay. I suggest we have Bo and get together. And everybody okay with that? Great. Go. There's no difference.
There was also a resolution that was attempted to be passed to bring up that issue and to get the town attorney to investigate that issue on the front end, which I believe failed in a public meeting.
Now, the resolution that we brought up that failed was, I was asking that you and Boyd looked into potential litigation costs. Chris said there aren't going to be any costs because who's litigating anything? And said the council was too busy or the town was too busy to take up this issue. That's what the argument was against that. And it failed. I couldn't even get a second.
Yes, sir. Which occurred during a public meeting of the town council regarding that matter. That matter was debated and it failed.
That's not the same thing as debating whether or not Chris Howley told the SSVC to not look at the buildings. Those are two completely separate matters.
We know he did. So what's the, okay.
I'm addressing what Phil just said to me, bringing it back to what actually happened.
Going on. I think we've done a very good job in due diligence and looking at this issue. I believe a report came out and there's a certain faction from the beginning that has been extremely biased, that has not wanted this to happen, that regardless of what the results in this report come in, there's still going to be a no, won't even admit that there are actually some great things that came out of that report. And now, since the facts aren't backing them, it's personal attacks. I've been attacked personally like Chris Howley doesn't know what my kid needs. That's a personal attack. I have never implemented that I knew what any kids need. I have said on the record that I think there are some people here who are not looking at this as the best interest in how to improve education. I'm still convinced that's the case. The main reason we're doing this and the most important thing, and all this else is distracting from it, is what is best for student outcomes? What is best for our students? Hopefully in that process, what is best for county students? If we keep focused on that, we'll get to a good answer. If we let all these other distractions in, we're not going to. So that's my opinion of what's going on.
I agree with you.
Do we, do you think we need to do something?
I put it to you as a council. In my opinion, our veracity, our truthfulness, our reputation has been challenged. Phil and I were sitting there, we didn't invite this person to speak to us. They walked up to us and began to provide misinformation.
I mean, you were talking as far as taking legal action or what?
No, I don't, I don't know.
Well, these documents are part of your evidence here.
I don't think this is a small.
I don't blame you. And all these documents are part of the record at this one time. There's no indication.
I asked you to make sure that there was, if there were any way to misinterpret or take the words and come up with a different interpretation. I don't, and I, and I don't see it.
I'm a member of the council. I'm not a member of State with HCD. I did not, oh, I want to, I want to make a confession that when a citizen at the meeting last week asked the question of each one of us, you answered, I answered, and Boyd answered it as to when we first became aware of this, after I gave my answer and someone else was speaking, I realized that what I said wasn't true. Because it wasn't at the council meeting, it was the day before the council meeting when it appeared in the paper. And I had just read it and went, oh my goodness. Look, oh my, this is going to be big. And then 15 minutes after that, I got a phone call from Boyd. He said, just want to alert you to something. And I said, does it have to do with Signal Mountain creating its own school district? Do you remember that, that day? And I was like, wow. So at that point, I don't have to feign neutrality. I didn't even know it existed. And so now I start looking into it. So absolutely, I come at it with my biases. I'm a strong believer in democracy and in, and the way these things work and, and in public education and libraries and just how we make a good society. Okay? So sure, I came at it with a bias. I'm not going to lie about that. I believed everything that I was told, but I have learned since then that, Chris, you were involved as much as four years ago in putting together this ad hoc committee.
Not true. Not true.
Alright, so I talked to someone-
So that's another accusation.
What I'm going to tell you, I talked to someone who you served with on a sports committee, who called me, I had never talked to this person before, called me out of the blue, said, I want you to know that Chris Howley had this conversation with me four years ago, when we were on the sports boosters together. That's one, and then there was another one.
What was the conversation of?
I'm not going to tell you my conversation, I'm telling you what-
Then how do we know if it had anything to do with it?
The accusation is that you were asking people to be on an ad hoc committee as much as four years ago.
Never.
You didn't help with the ad hoc committee together?
Did not.
You did not?
No. No. I did not.
You didn't, okay. Then several people, citizens, and here we go again, are not telling the truth to me.
Right.
But here's the problem, Dan-
And the accusations, it's, hey, you changed the resolution.
No, no wait.
No, can I talk, because I always get cut off, and it's getting old.
Go.
Okay, I am sorry, but I think part of this problem is this conspiracy theory going around, and I'm sorry, Dan, I think you're heading it up. There's constantly these accusations of Chris doing something wrong. The first day of council, you accused him of something with the mayor, and the whole way the mayor and the vice, breaking the law there. Accusing him of breaking the sunshine law. I feel like you're doing it again. Half the problem is feeding this mentality that there's something, you know, something wrong going on. Chris was now involved four years ago, he put the ad hoc committee together, I mean, it's, it sounds crazy. And I think that is part of what, what the division is, is that there's constantly, well, who, on social media, you're all over it saying, well, I don't know who, who put that, who said, who instructed them, that was a big threat. Who instructed the SSVC not to do the buildings? And it was put out there like there's something nefarious going on. And it's just not true.
This couldn't have been more transparent, this entire process.
We went overboard to get every meeting public, recorded.
That accusation was made in the meeting too, it worked out to be transparent, and I-
I don't know how you, anymore.
I don't either, and I reacted positively. In fact, that it's as open as I, no, I just, this discussion has gotten so heated, obviously, it's around the tailoring. My point is, that he did run the accusation to me, and to Phil, in Phil's presence, when I was gone, period.
What do we do?
I don't know. But the stories, here's the problem, the story's out there. It's being circulated among people who, and I believe the citizens are opposed to this, to this idea. If the story persists, then I suggest that, I'll name the person that came to me, and ask that person to come and substantiate the reason for that claim. And if there isn't a substantiation, and that what all the misunderstanding is Dan suggests, then-
Let's clear it up there.
It's done, it's taken care of. But I just can't sit back and accept that kind, that level of immodity.
I go back, yeah.
And, and just won't, I'm sorry.
I go back to when the facts maybe don't support your position, you start looking for other angles to attack the credibility of the council, or attack the credibility of SSVC, or attack the credibility of this person. To demonize, right. When, boy, it'd be much nicer if we could sit down and say, hey, you know, you got a great, I'm really worried about the teachers being able to, being able to advance their careers in a smaller district. That's a great argument, makes sense to me. Somebody came with a special education and listed things, that's a good argument, let's talk about that. Hey, you know, here are some negatives that we can talk about out of this thing, here are some positives. But when you totally say, look, it's coming out here, there are no positives in this report, it's totally false, you guys are cheating, you're not-
Pushing an agenda.
Blah, blah, blah. I lose, I don't, I don't even take those opinions anymore. Because that's a person who's not willing to sit down at a table and have a discussion about something. That's just my two cents. That's when you get the personal attacks, and you guys broke the law. We beat this horse?
I think so.
You ready to move on?
I appreciate your questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nope, not. I'm not. We're leaving the SSVC?
Well, we're going to go to the SSVC system investigation next step.
Okay, yeah, sorry, I'm lost.
I'd like to, before we get to that, I'd like to invite Dr. Friedel and Amy Mukim up to the table. Please, if you got, thank you, thank you for coming. Dr. Friedel, I believe notified me, or Bo, or, I think it was me, was it me? Are you?
I don't know what you-
About to say?
No.
Okay, good. What do you mean, you couldn't read my monitor? Come on. That throughout the course of having public meetings with the public to lay out their report and take questions, that they did find an error in the budget. Somebody did identify an error in the budget, so they've, you take it from there.
Right.
And explain how, what it was, and how it is. It doesn't affect the first year, or the access, or anything, it's the ten-year project, projection or something.
At the second public forum that we held, which was roughly six or seven weeks after the dissemination publication of our report, a member of the audience raised a question about a decision by the Tennessee Court of Appeals of 2014 regarding a dispute between the city of Athens and McMinn County. The issue is that there is a statute that specifically says that a county may, a county is not obligated to allocate funds derived from property taxes and sales tax revenues to an independent municipal school district within that county if those funds are allocated for capital projects. The county, there's a different statute that requires the county to allocate a pro-rata portion of all funds received from bond issues for capital projects. This statute clearly presents an inequity in that the property and sales tax revenues come from the citizens who support all the schools within the county, including municipal schools. That is, the city of Athens argued that residents of the city of Athens pay property taxes to the county. They pay sales tax, which goes to the revenue of the county. Yet, the schools within the city school district do not receive a portion of those revenues when they're allocated for capital projects. But they do receive a portion of the bond issued funds for capital projects because the county taxes paid off the bonds. The Tennessee Court of Appeals agreed that there was an inequity. But it said, the statute is written very clearly. And as much as we may agree with your argument, we are not empowered to change the wording of the law as it was passed by the legislature. This is a legislative issue. And so it upheld the county's decision not to allocate funds to the city schools when they came from annual property and sales tax revenues. There is currently a bill before the Tennessee-
But it does, doesn't change the bond?
Doesn't change the bond.
Okay.
There is currently a bill before the Tennessee legislature to change the law to correct this inequity, but that bill has not yet been voted on. When this case was brought to our attention, we went back and looked at our budget. This does not affect operating revenues at all. The annual budget in Exhibit A does not change in the slightest. What it does change is the projection for five and ten-year capital budgets. In the course of looking at this, we also discovered that we had compiled Exhibit, the fact that the data in Exhibit B prior to Hamilton County's issuance of a $100 million bond project to fund capital improvements in Hamilton County schools. And we realized that that changed our annual average bond revenue projections. And so if we were going to make one change, we had to make two changes. And so we've made both changes. And what you have before you is a revised Exhibit B. It doesn't affect Exhibit A, which is annual operating-
We have a huge packet here, so can you talk about which page?
Exhibit B is, I'm going to let Amy run you through the numbers.
Hey, Doctor, can you ask her which page in our packet she's talking about?
Amy will walk you through the numbers, Chris, let me just summarize.
We've got about thirty pages though, that's why I was trying to get everybody on the same page.
All of Exhibit B should be about sixteen pages, I think.
Oh, okay, so it's a whole thing halfway through this packet, first page says Exhibit B, five and ten-year project.
So what you have is a revised cover page.
She gets it, Dick.
A note to the revision, which explains what I have just explained.
Okay.
A revised first page showing that it is a revision. And then there are five pages of text with very small changes that are, that's the narrative that goes through and explains Exhibit B. And then you have a complete new Exhibit B, and I'm going to let Amy walk you through the numbers.
Okay, so we did revisit the budget projections. Still, with, we've, I guess in looking at the projections, you've got five scenarios.
What page number is that?
It's, well, it's at the, in the packet that you were given, it's first there, where it says Exhibit B. So if you start on the page that looks like this. It's after the text that you distributed it.
It's after the text, so it's two pages in.
Yeah, after the text.
So first, it's titled Five and Ten-Year Budget Projection Summary.
It's after page twenty-eight, if you're going by the numbered pages. That's where the page, she just showed us begins.
Okay, thank you.
So just basically after the text, or just for similar, so anyway, so basically-
And then she's turned to this page. Two more pages in.
So, as explained in the methodology page, I'll just go behind and frequently run you through the projections. So for the five and ten-year budget summary, we basically looked at five projection scenarios based on different population growth projections that came out of our demographic study that was done by the SSVC. And all of these cases, even after the five and ten-year, the five and ten-year projections all show that, that a balanced budget can be maintained, and the surplus can be maintained during that time as well. So that, and then your capital was highlighted, it's your, is an estimated total capital. And basically, the way that we looked at the capital projections, we did make the corrections for adding the $100 million bond allocation as well as taking out the, any revenues associated with tax allocations for capital projects. So the result of that is that you have an estimated total capital. In an effort to be conservative, we assumed that the capital expenditures would not grow like other revenue expense items that we had investigated, because we had track records of those growing over time. The capital bond allocations have been fairly constant over the years, so in an effort to be conservative, we said that the, those allocations would, we would assume those to remain constant, so not to overestimate the revenues for the, for the capital bond allocations. So looking at the five and ten-year projections, your estimated total capital is basically your capital account over the five and ten-year period. The surplus plus capital basically creates a cap of an envelope. The envelope is, the surplus would be, is if a school board were to apply all of the surplus towards capital funding, which we know is not going to happen. So, but it does provide us a cap, so that would be the maximum that, that a school board would ever have for a capital project. The reality is, is you're probably going to be somewhere in between, because a school board would have to make the decision of how much capital outlet to save each year. So somewhere in between, so what you've done is create, these two yellow lines have created basically an envelope, with a top and a bottom, and so that's the only significance of that top number. Reality is probably going to be closer to, more on the bottom end, but it does give you different, it does give you a scenario for each of those projections.
Are you done? Because I have some questions.
Sure.
Okay, I didn't want to interrupt. So when you, we have an accumulated surplus line, right now, under this, where it says we're going to have forty-five million left over, nineteen point six million or forty-five, nineteen point six over five years, I'm just looking at the first bucks. Forty-five over ten years. That's not accurate, because that would be assuming that we didn't take the surplus that we're going to find and invest it back into, into programs, or, you know, additional benefits for the schools.
It is accurate but not likely, because it is, it is accurate that it is a cap on the total potential. It is not accurate that that is a likelihood. And so the, okay, go ahead.
In your first-year annual budget, do you put any in that budget towards capital?
Yes, in the budget, we use the pro-rata share of Hamilton County's current capital allocation. Hamilton County currently has a capital outlet allocation of $130,000 for the district in their general operating funds budget.
How much did we put?
So that, our pro-rata portion is, I believe, seventy-four hundred dollars, seventy-four hundred dollars. However, we did make the recommendation based on a discussion with, based on a discussion where Gary Waters, who was-
The maintenance guy.
The maintenance person from Hamilton County. And if you look at our budget under recommendations by our committee, it was to allocate seventy cents per square foot as a, that's just a kind of rule of thumb, recommendation for capital expenditures.
I'm not being rude, I promise. Going back to the question, how much did you put for capital then?
That's seventy-four hundred dollars, we used the pro-rata share.
But I thought you said you went back and applied what Gary Waters was on point.
And that was in our recommendation, we were in the-
Okay, so it's not included in here.
Yes, as far as the Hamilton County equivalent, we used the pro-rata portion.
So, you know, I kind of discount the nineteen and the forty-five, because at some level, you're, and this is purely opinion, you're going to use some of that surplus to improve. So that brings it down to what you're talking about, which is the seven point four-
Yes.
And the fourteen point eight. How did you originally come up with those? I know we get our percentage of whatever bond issues occur over those periods that goes to our capital fund. How did you come up with that number?
Okay, if you look at page in this packet, if you look at page B sixteen, there's a half, there's a history of capital bond fund and capital expenditures, it's broken out by years, and it goes back-
Is that the last page?
Page B sixteen, yes, it's the last page.
Does it look like this?
Yes.
It's the very last page.
So the history of, so looking back from 2000 to 2017, there is a, it shows the history of capital funding to Hamilton County based on bond expenditures as well as capital expenditures. So in the original projection, we had used the average per year for both bond and capital. With this revision, we have allocated zero percent to Signal Mountain from the capital expenditures. But you can see that the majority of capital funding in Hamilton County is by bond.
So to come up with your five-year and ten-year expected numbers of capital that we received from the county through the state law, you've used the average of the previous ten years to come up with that number?
We used eighteen years.
Eighteen years? Okay.
We went back eighteen years for that.
Okay.
And bear in mind that two things could change to make these numbers larger. One is, Hamilton County could, in the hypothetical situation where there is a separate municipal school district, Hamilton County could decide to allocate funds on a pro- school district, Hamilton County could decide to allocate funds on a pro-rata basis, which is the equitable thing to do. The second and more likely thing is the law could change.
The law changes.
In the first case, the law does not compel them.
Does not compel them, it permits some of it.
But it doesn't.
They might have some of it.
Because it doesn't specifically specify.
Decide to do the right thing.
I think the law, pardon me if I'm wrong, but I think the law specifically says that, that the parent's district is, or the county district is required to allocate on a pro-rata basis for operating and teaching operations of the school system. So the reason the court case was argued was because that when those, those capital expenditures were used for, I mean, the, when the, the tax money was used for capital, that that did not fall under that.
So five years, five years down the road, this, let's say this happens, five years down the road, we use all our surplus to improve education or increase programs to where we want. We're looking at $7.4 million left over in the capital fund. Let's say you have to expand the high school or you have, you know, that development out there they're talking about goes in and you gotta fit everybody in there. You can expand the high school, you can do it, you know, expect, do whatever you have to. That money we'd have to put towards capital?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on this? Because I'd like to ask one more question, it's on, it's on a little different, but I wanna make sure the council doesn't have any other questions first. I, I was able to review the tape from Monday night for the meeting I wasn't able to attend. And I believe it was Ms., can I?
Yeah, are we, are we still continuing with resolution review or we moved on to the next item?
I think we're, we, we have been in the school system investigation next steps. That's where we, that's when I invited them up to the table.
Okay.
I said before we set our schedule, I think we needed to hear what they had to say. Was it Monday or Tuesday night?
Tuesday, I think.
Tuesday, Monday or Tuesday night, the forum at the high school. I watched the video and a Ms. Corley, I believe it was Ms. Corley, came up and had a very important issue she was addressing, which was the special education. And, you know, one of those things that started with, hey, these things aren't in here. And she made a whole list of, how many, I don't know, I think it was 10 things that we, that you as an SSBC missed in putting in the budget for special education, which is, you know, obviously not a good thing. Were you able, have you seen that? Were you able to see the list? Were you able to address any of that or what?
Well, I know that special needs is a huge component of the community and the council, and it needs to be. So if I could just walk you through kind of the process and some of the comparisons that we, that we have, that we have made, if that is, if that's okay. And then if there's further questions, I would be happy to.
That's fine.
Is that okay?
That is, I'm, I'm, it's, as long as the council wants to hear, it's fine. I guess my question more is, she identified six, seven, eight, 10 things that you didn't include in your budget. Did you or did you not include those things in your budget?
The, it's our, the, yes, because it would look different because you, if I, if I could just go through the explanation, I think it will explain.
Can I get a simple yes or no afterwards?
Yes.
Okay, good, please go through the explanation.
Let me just, let me explain.
May I ask something though?
Yes, absolutely.
Because you may or may not want to do this now. I wish Boyd was still here, since we are talking.
We can wait.
Well, I mean, just quickly, we can bring it up again. I'd like to propose that our, because we're talking about next steps, I wish Ms. Corley was here right now to, to be able to ask clarification questions because she was the one who had them.
Well, now, I, I, that's why I wanted to talk about this first, because I think we need to bring that into the next step conversation.
Okay, so my next.
I think you and I are on the same page.
Yeah, yeah, so my suggestion is going to be that our next step be to have our next council meeting be a public forum, an open public forum. We have plenty of time to do the announcement, we're all scheduled, we don't have to worry about scheduling conflicts, we can all be here, and we could make that be a public forum so people could ask questions right then. We're already scheduled for it.
I'm not so sure that this special ed component though doesn't need a separate.
Separate forum on it, so depending on what we hear.
Involve, involve the community of special needs on Signal Mountain and what the budget provides for.
Right.
And you have to know that I'm not a, a unbiased observer of this community, having been part of it, a member of the school. So I do have special needs, so I, and it does seem to me like, this is not the first time it's come up, it's a question of limited resources, I have that many to clarify.
Right.
I'd still like to hear our answer.
Yeah, me too.
I'd like to hear your answer.
Amy, I'm sorry, sorry to interrupt you, could you please go ahead with your explanation?
If I could just, if I could just explain for a minute.
Please.
And then we can have other questions.
Excellent.
Thank you. Okay. First of all, and I, and I, yeah, I, I put a few notes together because I know that this is really, this is an incredibly important topic for our entire community. Special needs funding was a high priority for the SSBC. Ms. Farah has a background in special education and other committee members shared their experiences regarding requests to access special education services for their children. The committee was sensitive and diligent in researching the expenses associated with special education to ensure that these expenses were conservatively allocated to that category. Hamilton County was cooperative in providing the cost estimates for educating special needs children, both on and off the mountain, through contract services, including services provided by Orange Grove, Siskin, and the Dawn School. Hamilton County provided costs for busing, bus assistance, additional nurses, summer school programs, psychologists, speech and language pathologists, instructional supplies, and contract services for occupational and physical therapy services. Plus, all special education teachers and assistant salaries and benefits were included based on school specific information provided by the Hamilton County budget. As explained in the final report, the financial feasibility study focused on the general purpose school fund budget, as was consistent with the Southern Educational Strategies report. Other funding budgets have a pass-through revenue and expense structure, since the money that comes in for these programs pays for the expenses generated by these programs. And each category has an independent budget framework. Under the federal projects fund budget, there is a category for individuals with Disabilities Education Act, IDEA. According to the U.S. Department of Education, the IDEA grants are intended to help cover the costs of providing special education and related services to children with disabilities ages 3 through 21. These IDEA grants are available to all school districts, whether they are large or small, whether they are a county or municipal system. When we asked questions regarding the expenses for the special education services at Signal Mountain Schools, we did not ask which Hamilton County budget was used to cover those expenses. Instead, we.
Say that again.
Say that again, yeah.
Okay.
That one's clear.
Okay, I go on to explain it.
I know.
I know, but say it again, because I wanna make sure.
I hear you, that's my excuse.
Okay, all right. When we asked the questions regarding the expenses for special education services at the Signal Mountain Schools, we did not have them specify which Hamilton County budget was used to cover these expenses. Let me go on. Instead, we conservatively assumed that all expenses provided would be covered by the general school fund operating budget to ensure that there were adequate resources allocated to cover special education expenditures. In reality, some of these expenses probably are and would be covered by federal fund grants, such as IDEA grants for special education. In that case, those expenses would be transferred to the federal funds budget for municipal district, for a municipal district bringing up general operating funds in that category for other expenditures, but they were included under the general operating fund budget for our analysis to ensure that expenses for special education were conservatively estimated. The Tennessee Department of Education reviewed the budget and did not flag the section for further study or corrections based on their review of the special education expense categories. While a school board would be responsible for determining the logistics of providing quality services for exceptional education students, it was the intention of the SSBC to ensure adequate resources were allocated to provide those services, whether they are eventually provided by district staffing or contract services through private agencies. For example, while Hamilton County has two audiologists assigned to the Dawn School that serves approximately 43,000 students in Hamilton County, a municipal district would probably use a contract service to fill this need rather than having a full-time staff member in this position, but the service would still be provided to our students.
But it doesn't show up in the budget with the line.
That's the problem, I think.
It does not show up in the budget with my line.
And so that's how they come to the conclusion that that service is not part of the project?
Right, they don't, they do not see it as.
They don't see it as.
And to find it in the Hamilton County budget, it is buried. I went through.
But you?
It is, it is assigned to one school and it is, it is, yes. But you're correct, it is not, because it would not be, well, it would be up to, it would be up to a school board to decide, but is, does, do our students need a full-time with benefits position for an audiologist?
Because that was, that was the nature of the question, wasn't it?
Right.
Financial, as much as it was the range of services available.
Right. Which I, but I, I mean.
And you're answering that question, that's fine, I had to clarify that, sorry.
Are you willing to put your statements there, kinda in the record, so we have it?
I'd be happy to.
Okay, are you finished or not?
No.
Okay, sorry, keep going.
That's fine. No, that's fine.
Please, please, go ahead.
Okay.
It's for.
Okay. There are state laws that mandate quality education and care for special needs students, so reducing these services is not an option, is not an option for municipality. As, it was the intent of this committee to ask as many questions as possible to ensure the cost for special education covered by services and, covered all services currently provided. However, it will be up to a school board to develop specific policies for both our regular education students as well as special education's programs. So as a result, when the SSBC budget, by, by looking at it in this manner, the SSBC budget is conservative against all benchmarks considered. And can you mind if I go through those benchmarks? Okay. For a Hamilton County comparison, Hamilton County schools have 12.6% students with disability. Our school system as a whole, 12.6% students have disabilities. And they allocate 10.5% of the budget to special ed programs and support. Signal Mountain Schools have 8.7% students with disability. So Hamilton County has 12, 12.6, we have 8.7, so we have a smaller percentage of overall of students with disabilities. 11.1% of the budget was allocated to special ed program and support. So we have 11.1% of the budget, this is the budget estimate, compared to 10 and a half percent that the county allocates, they have 12.6% students with disabilities and we have 8.7.
Can I ask a clarifications question? Is there any chance that any of the students with disabilities in these schools don't show up at these schools because they're going somewhere else in Hamilton County? And that's being covered in a different part of that budget? I mean, so it doesn't show up at ours, it shows up somewhere else?
I asked a question, how many, as far as children who are, like, bused off the mountain is served by, and so we have that data. If a student, I also have data on busing, I believe, for students who go to the Dawn School. So there are students who go there, but the costs, those costs were provided. The only, if, if the students' needs cannot be met in our school, it is my understanding that there is the Dawn School, which is for students with special needs and behavior, and there's, I think that they cover a range of issues, including, it's for children who cannot be, who have not been able to be educated in, in, in the traditional setting. And then there's also the private options. Orange Grove, Siskin also provide services for our students and those, that, those services were.
Are they subcontracted by HCD? So when they send someone to Grove, is that, is that a contracted service?
Yes, that is a contracted service.
Now, you said HCD has 12.6% students with special needs. What did you say was percentage of their budget?
10.5.
10.5.
It's going to add some dollars.
There's more money going in.
So your average per child on Signal would be more than what their average spend for the county?
Yes, and I can go on, if, do you mind if I keep going?
Go ahead.
Because I have, I have additional comparisons, if that's okay.
Good.
Okay. So that was the first comparison. The total amount allocated for special needs programs and support for those categories was higher than the Signal Mountain pro-rata portion for the Hamilton County special needs program and support, even though Signal Mountain has a lower percentage of special needs children. So the numbers that we came up with, for the total amount for special needs program and support was higher than our pro-rata portion, even though our proportional number of students with disabilities is less. Okay. The committee's budgeted expense for contract services for exce.
Go ahead, you're good.
Okay, I just can't think. Sorry.
Come on, Ron, what are you doing? She was on a roll.
I was on a roll, I can't, I couldn't, I'm obviously distracted. Okay, the committee's budgeted expense for contract services, for, so for contract services for exceptional education was two times the pro-rata portion for Hamilton County's general education fund allocation for this expense, based on the responses received from Hamilton County. So for our contracted services, we have fewer percent of students with disability, yet we, the, the contract services portion was twice the pro-rata portion for contract services. So therefore, so the, the conclusion from that is a higher percentage of the budget was allocated to special education compared to Hamilton County, even though Signal Mountain has a lower percentage of special needs students. This is most likely due to be based on these responses to the fact that some of these services are currently being funded with federal grants. And, but were included in the general operating fund to be as conservative as possible with the estimates for this category. So, so when Hamilton County responded that these are all of the services that we provide and we, and when we put them in our budget, we have fewer students with disabilities, we end up with a higher funding level under that category. We put it all under the general operating expense to ensure that there was a conservative estimate for special education.
Now, just make sure I understand, you took the federal grants and the local budget and combined, is that correct?
We didn't, we did not have them, we did not have them specify whether those funds were from federal or from operating. But when you look at the numbers and you see how much higher our contracted services are and all of the, and our special ed is compared to the county budget, I mean.
So that, that funding is included in the budget?
Yeah, we put it all in, we said, we're putting it all in.
You don't distinguish it on.
Right.
Okay.
Right, in an effort to make sure that those services have, you know, that they're sufficient dollars. I also have, go ahead, I also have a comparison to other districts I'd like to.
As my, ask, have you compared to other, what would be similar sized districts to N?
Yes, okay, okay, that's my next comparison.
All right.
So first of all, so our first benchmark is, how do we stack up against funding this, against, against Hamilton County? How do we stack up, you know, how does our budget stack up there? The second comparison is to districts of similar size. The committee budgeted nearly $1 million more for special education program and support compared to Lenore City, which has similar numbers of students. So that's nearly a million dollars more for those two.
That's just one though, have you looked at any others?
Yes, and the committee budgeted over $300,000 more for special education program and support compared to Elizabethon and Millington, which also has a similar number of students. So against one, so we looked at basically, we've looked at three districts, Lenore City, Elizabethon and Millington, they all have approximately the same number of students that we have. We're a million dollars higher than Lenore City, we are $300,000 more than Elizabethon and Millington.
Is Lenore in Oak Ridge?
No, it's Loud, there's Loudoun County, it's in Loudoun County, it's, it's a Knoxville.
All right, any more comparisons or can we?
Um, that's, that's it. So anyway, I guess all it is to say is that the committee is confident.
Thank you. And you don't mind submitting that for the record?
I do not.
All right.
Can I clarify something? I'm sorry.
Go ahead, no, it's you, go.
Okay, all right, and then, I'm pretty sure I understand this, but I just wanted to get it out there. So what I heard you say was, you know, we hear a lot about it's up to the school board, it's up to the school board, and that can be so vague because we don't have a school board yet. But what I heard you say, the school board would determine, not if. But what I heard you say, the school board would determine, not if we provide these services, because the law says we have to provide the same level of special needs services that Hamilton County is currently providing. So that would include Ms. Corley's list of audiologists, behaviorists, school nutrition, I have her email here, all of those listed that are not line item budgets. So the school board would then determine whether it would be a staff position or a contract position. But all of those services will be met?
Yes, it's not a matter of if you provide it, it's how you provide it.
And that changes us, those two factors, it changes us.
Right.
And there's, you actually get different federal funding and stuff depending on those percentages, too. Is that what I heard you say?
That's, yeah.
I would, yeah, I think we need to, I like Dick's idea. Thank you both. I don't know, any other questions?
I don't know where this is all going to head, but I want to personally thank you for educating me with this report. So if nothing else, I'm happy to see some information that I would never know otherwise now. So thank you.
Yes.
Can I just suggest that the question that you're asking about special ed would be very appropriate for the forum next Monday night, where three superintendents of suburban school districts in Shelby County will be here, and we can ask them what their experience has been on this very same issue.
Can you add that question to the list?
Yep. And I, if I could just add, I believe that Germantown is one of the municipalities, and at the original.
Oh, it's coming?
I think.
Casey, who's coming?
I think it was Germantown, but the reason I thought that was interesting is at the original handoff from the SSVC to the town council, it was brought up that one of the municipalities relied more heavily on property tax and sales tax, and I went back and found out that that was Germantown. So I think that would be interesting, I think that would be interesting to note and to talk about.
Thank you.
Where's the meeting supposed to come? That meeting?
Where's?
It's in the gym.
It is in the gym, and the representatives are from Collier Hill, Germantown, and Arlington, as well as the town council from Arlington.
When is the meeting?
It's next Monday night at six thirty.
At six thirty. I have a prior obligation, I will not be there, I'm sorry, but I'll try to make it at the end. Huh?
It will be reported.
Okay.
Twenty-nine percent, we have two for it.
No, already December eleven.
Thank you both very much, but please don't leave the room yet. Do you need to say something?
Yeah, John has given you at least an explanation. I thought it would be important, at least for the record here, that you actually have in your file for the minutes a copy of the City of Athens case, since that was brought up to us at the last meeting, and that's the reason for your exhibit B changes, at least you've looked at in connection with that in this case. So I think that's important. And I do think it's important, at least to discuss, because there was some dispute as to what that lawsuit did and whether it basically just submarined any ideas that the SSVC had pointed out at that point in time, was that that was a litigation matter that was ongoing for, from nineteen ninety-six until two thousand and eleven, which indicated it was more than ten, well, almost more than ten years worth of litigation over a matter of what was the general purpose school fund that the county provided to the city school boards there, and whether the county was properly not apportioning educational capital projects funds. The two cities that were involved in that litigation, and I think it's pretty important to talk about, were in McMinn County here, Athens and Etowah, basically were small municipal school boards that had in their charters the ability to create school boards for a number of years, had been operating for a number of years, and there was some fussing over whether they were getting all the money they were entitled to. That litigation went on for more than ten years, and the courts eventually looked at the statutes that were in effect at forty-nine, three, three fifteen, and said basically that school funds for current operation and maintenance purposes collected by any counties except for those funds for transportation that could have a separate tax levy would be apportioned among the local educational agencies, which could be a city or some type of special district in the area, based upon the weighted full-time equivalent average daily attendance that was maintained by each during the year. So basically, all current operation funds, which is what you've got in your report here, are clearly available under state law, as the committee has looked at in the past. The budget project projections that you're providing here at this point in time would comply with this rule, which is a Court of Appeals ruling in the eastern section of Tennessee at this point in time, and we believe that that's applicable based upon the current law. That law can change at any point in time, and there can be amendments to section forty-nine, three, three fifteen if someone chooses later on. It also means that if Hamilton County and the town of Signal Mountain, if it created a municipal school board, didn't fuss all the time, then they might also be able to have more assets than the current amounts for current operation and maintenance purposes.
By not fussing, you mean not litigate?
Not litigating, not fighting back and forth between our folks in the, I guess, the county on the collection of taxes. Because it's clear that the folks in the town of Signal Mountain would be continuing to pay their Hamilton County taxes regardless of whether they were in a municipal school system or not. Those taxes would then be diverted to another area if they weren't used in our municipal area. But I would like to make sure we got a copy of that in the file for the record, because that came up earlier.
Anybody have anything done for them, and I can let them go? Is it for them?
Well, I guess it's, do we need a motion to amend this to the final report?
Well, I think there's, I think there's an earlier question, which is, do we need to have the SSVC approve it before we accept it? Because my understanding is just the two of you worked on it, right?
Right.
Yeah, but the SSVC is dissolved.
I'm not sure how functional that committee is at this point. Two members have moved away, we haven't met for almost two months.
Can they do an email vote on something like that?
No.
All right. Or we can just accept it? What are our?
Why don't we add it to the town website as a town document? It doesn't have to be necessarily a part of the SSVC.
I was prepared to do that as soon as this meeting concluded and you were comfortable with it.
What's the best way to do that, Phil?
As long as this body is willing to accept this as, I guess, an amendment, and it simply includes the budget projections in light of something that came up in one of the meetings on there, I think you're fine. But I mean, it's the decision of the town council to add it to your website.
Do we have to do that officially, or can we just?
I think you probably would, might ought to do that, since it's in a public.
Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
What is the motion?
I'll make a motion that we add Amy's report addressing special needs in the budget to our town website.
Also the correction?
With the correction.
The amended budget.
With the amended budget correction.
And just so I understand, we'll add this as an amendment and leave the original final report intact, and this will be an amendment there, too, submitted by John and Amy.
Wouldn't it make more sense just to substitute?
Well, and that changes the report.
That changes the report that you submitted was approved by the SSVC, so I think this is probably the cleanest way to do it.
Okay.
Did I have a second for her, or not?
I'm sorry, can I restate?
Absolutely, absolutely.
It was very long, I'm sorry.
You had about four different people chime in on that, so.
So I, the way I've kind of synopsized it, or, you know, trying to say it here, is that there's a motion to accept the report amending the budget and leaving, as an amendment, and leaving the original report intact.
And I think it's just amending the five and ten-year budget projections.
Yeah, it's specific, that's good.
And just so I remember, how much difference was there in those two offsets as far as the change in the actual, how much was the?
It didn't change the, let's see.
We have a first and a second, by the way. I think it was Amy.
It wasn't, it was not a.
In case, she didn't say that, sorry.
I think there's more of a change on the top end of the log rather than.
How it was acquired as a.
Yes, it was more, yes.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna say it one more time.
Go ahead.
Sorry. So, a motion to accept the report amending the five and ten-year budget projections and leaving the original report intact.
And I believe that Amy said, including the information she provided on special education.
Yeah, explaining special needs, or detailing special needs.
I can email us P D files.
Including the report addressing special needs.
That needs to be out there. Thank you for explaining that so layman terms.
All right, we have a first and a second, are you good, Carol?
I'm good.
Okay, we have a first and a second, we're in the middle of discussion. Anybody?
Amy, are you comfortable that that describes, this is a lot to digest, even with someone doing as good a job of explaining it as you did, and some of it's frankly over my head. Are you comfortable that that encompasses all that was changed within this?
I'm sorry, can you read it one more time? I apologize.
And I'm rewriting it as she's saying that. The motion to accept the amended budget of the five and ten-year budget projections, leaving the original budget report intact, to include the report on, addressing the report on special needs.
Yes, that sounds good.
Dan, Bob, Amy, ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Now, I think your suggestion about the special needs, including that in the forum that's coming up is a good one, but I think if you're available.
I was gonna say the same thing.
I think it'd be not only a gesture, but I think it'd be a real benefit to have you and that group of families together and go through this thing.
I go back to, I think we, the process we put together, and you all can go, but I would ask that you don't leave this room until we finish this topic, if that's okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got a police officer out there already. I think this kind of backs up that we've put a process together that's, you know, developing as we go, but we've really taken our time and our effort and studied these things. And I think this reinforces the decision to have the SSVC present their findings to the public so we could answer questions, but with questions like this still coming up in a public forum, which kind of sometimes construes the facts, like, hey, they changed the resolution, do we need to have more presentations so these questions, because that's not a question that once we go to us engaging can answer. If somebody goes up and says, you didn't include this in here, we can refute that because that's what they know. So it's either we have a couple more, or we have the, ask the SSVC to continue till all the, I thought, we thought all those questions were answered, but they're obviously not. Do we have a couple more of those meetings? Or I think it's, I think it's crucial that when we do engage the public in these things, that John or Amy or somebody from SSVC is there. So once a person starts a question with a fact, you didn't put tenure in for the teachers, and then says, how are you going to fix this? We can actually refute it.
The problem, and I thought the, my personal observation of the conference Monday night was really, generally pretty good. I mean, there is, anytime you're going to get a group together and talk about this subject, and I don't know how you limit it to simply questions and inquiries.
No, I think a lot more we're gonna get.
Because you just simply get statements of support or not, and I think we just have to deal with that. And I think what you, in order to overcome all that, to be able to sort through that, you have to have more than one or two of these things. And so I'm, I think it's, you know, I think it's in the community spaces that we make available, make ourselves available, make the product, the report available. And we were accused of not making the report transparent for these things. I mean, that was just nonsense. But having a face-to-face conversation is very, very, very helpful. It is to me and it would be to other folks. So more and more the better. I don't know how many are, is the right number.
But I proposed, I proposed a few minutes ago, and we moved on to something else, that we make our next council meeting a public meeting. We have plenty of time to announce that, and we can address questions from citizens at the next meeting. Can we discuss that?
If, yes, I think, I think actually council meeting is a perfect place to do it, because we can control the nature of the question, at least.
So it limits everybody to three minutes and not sure if I like that.
And we can filter out if you want to, and if you don't want to, I don't know. That's a scary thing to even think about. But trying to limit it to questions and concerns rather than the statements of preference.
I would rather not put it in a regular meeting, because we have other town business to handle, but maybe we do it right after the regular meeting, so it's then an open forum, and everybody can ask questions, we don't limit it to three minutes, and we do it that way.
We just had a meeting, I mean, Tuesday, right, where citizens were able to address at least two council members. So my only, I think we need to have a lot of these meetings, but my only concern is, I think there's three big questions out there that everybody wants answers to, and we're not prepared to give them that yet. So I kind of feel like we would be having a meeting so that people can come and make statements. And I don't know, I just, what questions haven't been answered?
The other thing we've done, I believe last meeting, we asked.
Yeah, I have a.
Councilwoman speak to come up with some sort of agenda and bring to this meeting so we can discuss it. But that may or may not be relevant at this point. I think, I want to make everybody aware of another thing, which is.
I don't think we've discussed this yet, though. I've got a proposal on the table. I would like for you guys to say, yes or no, we can have a public hearing at the next meeting.
Well, what is the next meeting? We've got a temporary.
A public hearing, or you just made a forum?
A public hearing where people, citizens, can ask their elected representatives questions.
Full agenda, so all of us, considering.
Doesn't look that full.
No.
I would just not rather have it limited to three minutes.
And true to question. Yes, sir. Not on your copy is, we do have regulations for significant purchase equipment provided. We also have a potential report that should be first reading for a zoning change that is coming up to the planning commission at their next meeting.
Oh, geez.
So there is.
Not that one.
It's not, it's not a complex one. It's one we've already talked about once.
Okay.
Those are just a couple of things.
I thought that poor rubbish wasn't an application.
So that doesn't sound.
Too bad.
Too challenging. Yes, that's what we had on there. So theoretically, we could include a.
Public hearing.
Public hearing. And it would have to be a three-minute consultation.
Well, I'd like to hear, I mean, before we make a decision on this, I'd like to hear if we need to have more SSVC engage in the public, if we're going to have a special ed separate one, if we're, I'd like to hear what Amy's are.
What I want is, because we're not necessarily the ones best equipped to answer the questions when they're asked. If we can put the person who's concerned with the question and the resource together and get, rather than.
That's kind of why I wanted to, I mean, I understand Dan wants an answer on this specific issue right now, but I thought we should get all the information on the table first before we decide any of these.
I would like to hear that, so I can make a decision.
Okay, we'll hear her. You want her to go first, and then I'll share what HCD told me? Okay.
Okay, my thought was, we're December first, and in light of even just how our work session started, this is a very heated and it's just a very, it's a hot spot for a lot of people. So my thought was to take a break through December, so we can all enjoy the holidays and not get into a lot of this. I mean, it's only a couple of weeks, and a lot of people are going out of town. I thought when we reconvene for the new year, we would have two meetings in January, potentially probably maybe toward the end of the month, have another meeting scheduled in February. But in the meantime, start getting answers to the big questions. Like maybe we, as a council, have Chris go talk to Walden.
I can add information on that piece first.
And start talking about, you know, what does this look like? Are you even willing? We start addressing the issue of Walden and unincorporated. It's one of the biggest questions. We're going to have twenty people show up and say, how are you going to do it? And we're going to look at them and go, well, same answer. We have four options. These are the four options. Well, what are you going to do? Well, we haven't gotten there yet. I just feel like. feel like, let's answer the big questions. Maybe in that meantime, that gives us time as a council to meet with Phil on the buildings. That's the other huge topic. We can't answer the question right now. So maybe we can start that dialogue. That way, when we actually have the meeting with our citizens, we can be more educated and give more concrete answers. I think that's what people want, in light of special needs. I mean, we just now got a room... I have been the liaison to the committee and didn't have that clear of an understanding that I have now. I think we need to get that out to the public, maybe have a meeting if there are other things that we need to address with special needs. And then the other one is the... What is it, 438? The in-kind part. Can we do in-kind? We don't even have a yes or no. So that's a you question, I think. But maybe we can give you that time between now and January to find the answers to those questions, and then we, as a council, can answer them.
Yeah, it'd be much more productive doing that one. Because if we have a meeting and can't answer it, this will...
No one's in a hurry. They're just looking, and it's like, there's no hurry.
I think we should go a little different direction. And let me... I got a call. Actually, I got an email saying HCD was having a meeting with us, a public meeting with us on the 14th of December or something. They were kind of announcing it. I think it was kind of like the ad hocks in the other one, saying, "Hey, we're having this meeting, and you're expected to be there." And again, we actually had a basketball game that night, so I said... I emailed him back and said, "You know what? It would be really nice if you just called so we could coordinate our schedules. I think this would be great to have us all on the same stage and answer those questions." So I told them that after this meeting, I would contact them to see if one of these meetings can't be a joint meeting with us and the HCD board and the county and whoever else they want to have on stage there. That way they can get everybody in the same room and have a legitimate discussion, dialogue about the facts of the report. And again, the opinions of each of the bodies involved. So that's on the table and has been requested, and they've agreed to work with us in scheduling something. So of those meetings we're talking about putting together, I think it's important to have one that we include then on.
Sure.
Dan, again, just, I think my resolve here is usually enough. If you want to have an actual public hearing, then we wouldn't be able to get that advertised to the 5th. The meeting's on the 11th.
I thought it takes one week.
Should have 14 days for a public hearing. So try to do it.
I thought legally it was one week.
Well, let's not call it a public hearing. Let's just call it...
It is two weeks legally.
That's...
It's two weeks on zoning matters. I think if you're just dealing with a hearing where you're allowing people to attend, it's just in your normal...
If it's going to be something formal in terms of a hearing.
Right, so it's not a zoning...
No, it's not a zoning matter.
So we can do it then. I think, Amy, I appreciate what you said, and the big questions... There are big questions, but I think there's a big overriding question that we are the only body that has standing to do anything about this at this point. Because any... For the SSVC's done, which we've decided, the council's the only body that has any standing to do anything. And that'd be directing our council to do something or direct our town manager to do something. And we work underneath the citizenry. And it's... And nothing that you said, Chris, interferes with having... I agree with everything you said. All those other meetings we ought to have as well. That doesn't preclude us from, at the earliest possible moment, which is what we said at least on a couple of occasions when the SSVC was done, we would have public hearings. We are already together, so none of us has schedule conflicts.
I don't remember the earliest possible moment piece, but...
Okay. None of that... Anyway, we could have a public hearing, and we could start the process. Still meet in January. We could still do that. But we're already getting together. We don't have a loaded schedule. This is the most important questions... Question that's on the mind of our citizens right now, and it's a chance for them to let us know how they feel if they want us to spend the time, energy, and money. For instance, having Phil do extra work, having Boyd do extra work to move forward with this. I think it's time that we hear from them, because that's who we work for.
There's a validity in that, based on a statement that Bo made. Amy, I didn't even remember that conference. If there is no uprising of the citizenry that falls in line but becomes excited by this idea, and frankly, I haven't really felt that yet, then the more we do towards, you know, reaching in, it suggests that we are advocating this rather than being an objective investigator. And as I... My metaphor to Bo was, you know, it's like pushing a little uphill. I'm amazed that he has never heard that before, but he had never... And it was very appreciative of him, I might add. But nonetheless, we are hearing opposition vocal and heated opposition. I don't know... I'm not ready yet to admit that that represents the center of the community. We'll see. The same report's around at the same time. But on the other hand, I'm not feeling the support that I feel like we should have to have a mandate to really go extensively down the road with this thing. And I think that meeting that you're suggesting would be an opportunity for us to get a sense if that support is really there. And frankly, where I'm coming out at this point is if we don't start feeling that support before long, then I think we have a serious consideration of what. Because, you know, I have serious personal analysis, and I've expressed those to Phil and Bo, about the district question. To me, that's the overriding overarching issue that has to be resolved, not the schools, but the... Not the buildings, I'm sorry, but how you construct a district that is irrevocable and responsible collectively to the success and the maintenance and operation of that school. And nobody's proposing anything to be addressed that even...
I agree. That's my biggest question. It was one of the things we set out at the beginning. I'm not comfortable with it.
And it's such a difficult question. And if there isn't really a desire there, then I, you know, I say, "Maybe it's just time to, you know, wait for..."
And I'm not saying pro or con to that, or you're in Dan's idea, but we've identified coming out of this four or five legitimate, large unanswered questions, being at the land of buildings, being at the in-kind donation, being at the inclusion and the four options that the SSVC laid out, and how do we get there. And there was at least one other that was a large issue. Plus, we have this special education issue that came up. So I think there are four or five out there. We, as a town, are looking for those answers. I've requested that Phil take the very complicated inclusion piece and say, "Here are the four suggestions they laid out, Phil. Can you explain to us, if you go suggestion one, how do you accomplish it? If you accomplish it, what are the end results? Who's included?" And that sort of thing. And kind of almost lay out a kind of position paper to help us understand those options. Bo and I have been looking to seek some other resolutions to those questions as well. I think we'll have some of those answers, at least some direction, within a two, three-week period. So...
But we won't have them the 11th.
So I'm just saying that those...
Where do those answers come from?
Dr. McQueen, maybe HCD.
Who is seeking those answers?
Phil. Oh, I thought you said Phil.
Who's directing? Phil's... It's... See, Dan asks little tiny questions that don't encompass exactly... They're not specific, so they're tough to answer. So give me a second here. Which question? Which question?
I have a question.
Pick a question.
Has the council determined that we want Bo or Phil to do those things?
I don't think they have.
Then let's talk about those things that we want to have done. Are we going...
It's our...
My reason I'm trying to get this question on the table right now, look at our org chart. Citizens, we're down here. We had an ad hoc group, and I appreciate that. That's good. I wish we could have had another, you know, had another group. We could ask for another ad hoc group to come forward with... We could do ad hoc groups the rest of our lives, you know, and then put committees together and do that all the time. We could talk to the larger citizenry and find out, do they in general... I appreciate the questions that you say is the largest questions. They're large, but I think they're secondary to the larger question, which you also alluded to, of...
Well, it's a...
Is the support there?
It's a chicken and egg question.
Yeah.
So you don't know what you're asking them to do first. But you got to get there. You got to figure out whether there's a desire on the part of this community to...
You're going to have the same five or six people.
But some people may not be able to make up their mind unless they know if Walden and Unincorporated are included.
Can I phrase this another way, please?
So they may be against it now because they think they're not included.
Do you want to go back to the questions you asked?
Yeah. I'll say what I want to say.
Okay.
We could... Let's assume for now that all of the questions are answered to your satisfaction, that buildings are taken care of, everything's there, everything's in line. I still want to know with the citizens if they want us pursuing this, because that's an is question. Is it viable? And we have a contingent determination on that now, but I'm willing to say, let's grant all the contingencies. I wish we could have a calm, comfortable discussion about morality, about whether or not it's the larger picture, what we want to do, about whether or not this is just a small group of people who want to do this, even if it's all the contingencies are met. Here's our chance to hear from citizens and answer them openly and let them ask us, where are we coming from? How do we feel about sports versus art? Because all of a sudden, it's going to be a different group of people that are in charge, you know? And there's just all kinds of questions. Sorry for that one, and that was probably a rabbit hole. But there's all kinds of things that come into this, whether... My questions before I knew this existed had to do with larger issues, as I said earlier. You know, just how... I'm not convinced, as a citizen of this town, that local control is a good idea because of the size of the budget compared to our town budget and the potential problems that it creates for everybody down the road. I'm not convinced as a citizen. I mean, forget that I'm a council member. I think citizens need to be able to ask those kinds of questions of us regarding our responsibility to them. So I would like to put, again, on the table...
Well, can we vote? I think what you and Dick said is you wanted to use it as a temperature gauge to see where the citizens stand. And I think most reasonable citizens haven't made a decision yet, because they want to know what's going to happen with the building. Are my taxes going to go up? What's... Can you do in... Those questions that we're talking about, answers. If we're close to answering that, wouldn't it make sense to wait two... We've taken 10, 11 months. Doesn't it make sense in two weeks to try to nail down those issues before we get a gauge? Because...
No, I can't argue about two weeks. That's not...
Most of my people that I'm hearing from is, "I don't know. I think the taxes are going to go up too much. I don't know because, you know, whatever other reasons." But if we can nail down these two or three reasons, those people who are in the middle, I think... You know, you got a group of 20% who's against this, doesn't matter how great the facts are. You got a group of 20% that are for, that's no matter how bad the facts are. It's the people in the middle I want to hear from that haven't made a decision yet, because we got four or five big things out there.
The risk that we run, I believe, and I think this is what I think Bo was saying the other day, the risk that we run is without that temperature, the more investigation we do, the further we go down the road of requirement, we become perceived as advocating this rather than simply investigating. And that is not what we want. That's not what we want to do. And somehow or other, we've got to figure out whether anybody cares. And I'll tell you frankly, and I'm not the best one to judge, because I don't get out much. But I don't run into too many people who really get what it is, telling the truth. There's no passion there for this thing.
Right.
Okay? And without that, it's dumb.
I think you make an excellent point, because I think you have different sectors of the town that have different feelings. I think you probably have a retired group in town that says, "Hey, as long as it doesn't affect my taxes, I don't care." You have a group in the...
Or the other part, I mean, is even more passionate. If it does affect my taxes...
Right. If it does affect my taxes, I care. I don't want any part of it. You got a group that probably a little closer to Amy and I, because I'm over at the high school every day, that you get a little different opinion. You got another group that maybe not... Doesn't have kids at the high school yet, and they're a different opinion. So I think... I agree with you 100%. But I go back to...
But who's captured the narrative at this point in time?
Right. I agree. I agree.
And until a group or some meaningful presence of agreement, you know, that I'm at this point, I don't see much reason to go any further down the road. Unless somebody can change them on, and I think it's sooner or later for them.
Okay. Well, we have suggestions on the table. Dan suggested a one meeting, next regular meeting, and include the public forum during our regular meeting, which would be December 11th.
And I agree. I think we should do this, but the understanding, you realize, there are going to be just as many questions that we can't answer that we can. So it's not going to be all that affirmative, you know, informative.
The honest answer of, "I don't know. I need to learn. I need to find that out," is healing for people to be able to ask you, and you say, "I honestly don't know the answer to that. That's something I'll look for." We'll get that.
If somebody comes and we could ask them, if this were the case, would they agree? I don't know. I just... We need some kind of sense of...
Yeah. Okay, Amy is suggesting a series of at least three meetings.
I don't want to give you anything.
Two in January, one in February. I have mentioned maybe possibly more SSVC meetings till we get all questions answered. Did mention that we're working on a couple of the questions, which we may have some answers to within the next week or two. But I feel strongly we need to wait till... Ron, are you leaving for good?
No.
Okay, thank you, because I wanted to thank you on something.
No, I'm sorry.
And then... But I think we should give it a couple of weeks and see if we can't get some answers to those. And I think it then becomes a much more effective. So maybe... I mean, I don't have a problem doing it at our December agenda meeting as opposed to during our regular meeting. I think that might be better.
So you're going to be...
They can't come during the middle of the day. That's...
Oh, that's true.
It's too hard.
To me, the high priority of all questions that need to be answered, and like I said earlier, is the question of the district, the legal idea of... I don't know how you frame the statement, but...
Are you working on that?
That's what I... To me, that needs to be as far as Phil's association with the town of Central Mountain, because I know he has a high priority to attend there, but his priority for us in life...
Yeah, I agree.
Just getting asked.
Why are you working on that?
Because I asked you. Because if any of you ask me to do something, sir, I would be glad to try to get my...
If I ask you to stop working on that.
Then we have a dispute.
Then we have a dispute among the council as to what you want done.
That's why I would like to hear from the people of the town to determine what it is.
Do we think it's a good idea to have Phil look into that?
I do.
I'm gonna say yes.
How long do you think it will take?
It's not...
Shortly.
Okay.
Like a week and a half, two weeks?
Well, it all depends on the other items that I'm here on your agenda for today. You also have other issues on...
In all fairness to the process, this has been a slow, progressive thing. It doesn't need to be sped up any.
That's right.
It's no good wait until we hear from citizens.
I feel strongly to get his answers and everybody else's answers. I feel strongly about what happens next this coming Monday to get their input so that we have a more productive meeting.
Yeah, the people I'm talking to aren't going to give you an idea one way or another. They haven't made up their minds until they hear some of these solutions. So I don't think waiting two weeks, three weeks to get that information, and whatever information we can, is going to affect us hearing from the public citizenry.
Waiting two or three weeks, that puts us at Christmas, and nobody's coming to a meeting. That's the other thing. I mean, you're talking December 11th. I'm not opposed to the idea. I would like to... If you could have some sort of answer by then, I... Maybe I'm bored with that. I do feel like, and my whole reason for not doing it in December is, we are all parents, community members, we're traveling. It's just the busiest time of the year, and we're going to put one of the most important... gonna put one of the most important.
Basketball.
Community forums on a council night and expect to get an accurate representation of what people are thinking. Nobody wants to fight during Christmas, I certainly don't.
I have to.
You know, I mean, I, I have a pretty good idea that that meeting is gonna be a lot of the same people, saying the same things, and it's Christmas, and I just, I would like to have better answers to be able to have that dialogue.
If, if that is the result, that, that's just another.
Let's tell them, that's.
That's another one.
Say the step that.
Isn't it if it's the same 20 people? I don't know that it is.
Yeah, if that tells you that it's only the same 20 people.
Like it or not, I mean, we're not sure of a, uh, what is that monkey thing?
Survey monkey?
Survey monkey?
I know a saying about a monkey, but it's not appropriate for the record.
Thank you, thank you, I'll hook up. But, you know, some way to survey and get a, a reasonable.
What about Dan's suggestion, we do monkey survey with, let's say, we get the schools, let's say we get this, let's say everything falls into place, would you be for this or against it?
Would that be a legitimate answer?
There's no way to.
A legitimate answer, I don't think it would be either.
I don't think, you have no control.
Yeah, it, it's just like, it's just like a petition that's online, I mean, you don't know if people are, that are answering or even live here.
I think our job is to hear from the citizens.
I don't have a problem hearing from the citizens, I agree with you on that, for sure.
I think we can accomplish that, not necessarily in a public forum, I think we can go out and talk to citizens without that and then bring it back to these meetings.
Yeah, but I don't know that we need, obviously, pass an opportunity by where we are all there to hear from citizens, and the opportunity is, I mean, we can, we can expand the, the, the three minute, uh, opportunity section to five minutes or six minutes or whatever it takes to make their opinion known, and like Dan said, it's just another piece of, if it's, if it's negative, it's, it, it just adds to the negatives and strengthens that position, until we hear from a body that says, I'm for, I'm, I'm rapidly come to conclusions, and those people in there.
Well, one suggestion your lawyer would give you, if you're trying to do this at a public meeting the week and a half before Christmas, is that maybe you have a designated time that you have for the public hearing portion, you don't allow one individual to keep on going forever, I think maybe it might be wise to have a three minute limitation and get as many people to be able to tell you something within that time limitation as you can. So if you wanna set aside an hour, hour and a half of having the public hearing, then you do that, that you only allow people to have short presentations and not just sit up there, uh, talking over and over again on the same thing.
And that's the way I think we might wanna do it, you know, if this is a short meeting, we say, hey, let's, it'll start at eight o'clock.
Well, yeah, if, if we're gonna do that, then we, we, I think we keep our regular agenda, citizens' opportunity to address the council about anything but, and then at the end of the agenda.
Sure.
Put another section in, citizen then put regarding municipal.
I don't think.
System and, and et cetera, but including.
Sure.
Anything to lose by that.
I don't, I agree, don't have anything to lose, I just, we can gather information, make it a data finding thing.
If it goes above.
Okay, so, what I'm hearing is, on the agenda, we will, at the end of the 11th meeting, uh, after.
It'll be item number 10, after the ordinance.
11, alright.
No, we'll, we'll do that, other business and adjourned earlier the last few things, so.
Okay, alright, so it'll be 10, 11, 12, and this will have citizens' comments on SSBC?
And we'll, we'll.
It's a question and answer thing, where they get to ask us questions.
And on the citizens' opportunity to address the council, we'll be very definitive and make sure that.
Okay, so this is.
Leaking that.
So this is not the, this is not just comments, this is, we're question and answer back and forth.
Yeah, I would like to be able to respond.
Is it safe? That's why I kinda wanted to close this meeting and go into that, 'cause it's different than anything we've ever done, we can still do it that evening, it's, you know, what's it matter if you do it in the middle of our.
Yeah, we'll close the meeting and then have a question and answer from the council.
Have a separate meeting, what's the difference?
Is it? Well, it's a bit, it's.
What?
What, I'm asking, please. Rephrase your question, I didn't understand.
What's the difference in having a separate meeting on this than putting it as a line item agenda in our regular?
Well, okay.
Well, that's what I'm saying, doesn't it?
Yeah, let's do it that way.
We just make it one.
I wanna ask something, did you have something, Boyd?
I was just gonna say, there's, there's nothing that dictates that you can't.
I'm sorry.
Structure that portion of the meeting however you want it, so there's really nothing that says it needs to be another meeting, and there's nothing that says that it can be a separate meeting, so.
Doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter, the fact that it's included in the agenda of that meeting, to me, just simplifies it.
I, I do wanna note that, I guess from YouTube, if, if we have citizens' comments at the beginning, can we tell people, can't say anything about the school system at that point?
No.
We can tell them that.
We can ask them.
One topic one time during the evening, if they wanna do it at the front end, it's the only, only time they can be heard. Sometimes that is beneficial, because you avoid the same person being heard the entire time.
The other thing is.
That's, that was my.
Yeah, the other thing is, people may not be able to stay there till 7:30 or 8:00 or whenever it is, and they wanna get it off their chest, but it's, then it's only a comment, it's not a question and answer at that point.
Somehow or another, I would like, you mentioned column.
Yeah.
You know, I'd like, that opportunity to have legitimate, serious questions about this, to answer them, and an opportunity to either respond to the real answer, or to say, I don't know, and I'll, I'll get Amy and she'll, she'll answer, John will answer.
Can you guys be here on that Monday?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can I add, I would like to also ask, and I know this is probably a big ask, but would the council, um, be okay with having maybe Chris and Boyd have a dialogue with Walden Prior, or, or if you could maybe get?
I've talked to Walden a couple times, so I can share with you any of those meetings.
Well, the question, then, then I'll, I'll play that in a minute.
I can't wait to see what is.
What's the question you're gonna ask?
If we were to be, if Signal was to move forward, this is what I wanna know, with an independent school district, how would you wanna be included? Which of the four options makes sense to you? Would you be willing? I'd like to know.
But then it makes.
You just asked three different questions there, so.
That makes more sense, though, when you have, you have Phil's outline of what those options are, how you get there, and what the end results are, because I think they have to know that.
Why couldn't that be a discussion between us and the Board of Alderman together, that people can watch, and we have a discussion, so that it's open, and everybody gets to see it?
Would you want to schedule that? Before or after?
It'd be dependent on when, when they.
Probably haven't before.
Okay.
I wonder if it'd be able to happen.
So we got our meeting?
Well, and that's why I said maybe we could have just our managers, it's not, there's no motive to be non-transparent, it's just, would be easier, because Boyd could sit down, Chris could, or you and Boyd could, and then we could come back and give the information versus having to wait a month, coordinate everything.
I'm concerned, though, because.
Why don't you sit down?
Well, I'll, I'll answer that in a second. Time is short in these things, especially since we really haven't, I long for moderated meetings, where you have a strong moderator who keeps people on, on task, and is gentle and firm with them. They're, they're much more fun, you learn much more, and you get, everybody gets more information. Uh, I certainly can't object to Dr. Friedel and Amy being there, but I would like for people to get to talk to the council, and I think it's perfectly legitimate for any of us to say, you know, that's a question that we, you guys have already suggested more SSVC meetings, that's a question that we would really like to, I think you really need to get Amy's expertise on that. So if you don't mind, could you keep your questions, you know, directed to things that we can answer, just as if, just as the SSVC is properly done during the process, saying that, you know, things are council questions. This is an opportunity for people to address council, and so having, having Walden here, having Walden here, or having the SSVC here can distract.
Take away from that.
Take away from what it is we're trying to accomplish.
I wouldn't mean for them to do Monday, I meant Prior to that meeting.
I don't think you were proposing for them to come to Monday's meeting.
No.
I was, no, I was proposing that if the coun, if it was the council's pleasure to have whoever, I don't care who does it, just somebody and Boyd, maybe just have, have a conversation with them, so that by the 11th, we can say, okay, here's, here's where we're at with Walden.
Well, I've talked to Bill, I've talked to Bill Trohanis, I've had coffee with him twice now, and we have touched on that issue, plus several other issues.
So, so you, to answer your question that you asked directly of me, about why don't I meet with him, I would like to do that in public with everybody watching.
Okay, then do it.
Alright, let's schedule a meeting then, and see.
There you go, I mean, that's all you gotta do. You schedule a meeting, say, Bill, I wanna have a public meeting with you and I sit down and let everybody watch.
No, I mean, where we're all here, so that, so we're all here.
But doesn't mean that's all we have to do.
No, I actually defended, I defended, if you watched the whole meeting, you saw me defend at the meeting earlier this week, individuals can talk to who they should, that, and I'm not, this is gonna sound like I'm accusing, that doesn't necessarily mean that it's what they should in, in the process of something like this, because there are certain things that you can do, while they may certainly be legal, they might not necessarily help your overall, uh, presentation, that you're, that you're being open and public about this.
Right, I frankly don't care about the presentation and the people who are accusing me of not being open. I know I have been open, what I'm trying to do is get to the answers and put the focus back on what's best for the students, because all this other noise is taking away from what I feel and have said from the beginning, is the main question, what is best for student outcomes and improving the education for our kids? So I'm gonna go meet with Dr. Brian Johnson, I've met with Coppinger, and I've met with the chairman of County Council, I've met with Trohanis, I've met with, to gather educate, to educate myself and to discuss with them these issues, so I can understand what we have to do to move forward.
Can you make a comment on that?
Absolutely.
And I'm not gonna question your, 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 Brock is, is, in my opinion, but I, I go back to the conversation we had a little bit ago, we are, there are lots of various narratives going on out there.
Right.
That suggest we're not being transparent and open, and, and that we're motivated by a desire to make this happen, rather than simply investigating the possibility. I'm, I'm not saying that is a valid conclusion, but it's out there.
Right.
Can't, can't argue with that. So, I think it would be helpful, and I think, I encourage you to talk to those people, I think it's a really good thing, but I wanna know what they're saying. Uh, so I think, even though you're having private meetings with counterparts out in, in, about this subject, I think it would be helpful to dispel this notion.
Okay.
That we're, that you report publicly what those discussions are, except those things that can't be, and I don't know, I mean, maybe they have something they'll talk about, I don't know, but I just.
Well, and I've tried.
But I think it would really be helpful, Chris, to, to, for us to be able to.
Absolutely, and I've tried, and I've tried to do that at our, at the end of our meetings, when we talk about other business, say, hey, I had this meeting this week, this is what happened, or in one instance on the buildings, I said, I cannot tell you because I promised this person, I could not say it, fine, if people wanna see that, I, I, I don't know, I have no gain for this either way, so I, and I still have huge concerns, but if, when people get off the topic, that's when they start personally attacking.
So the only thing we can do is provide as much information as we can.
Right.
And, and so, I, I would ask you to please do that and make those, those results of those meetings public information.
Absolutely.
And, and it might help put some of that to the rest.
And as I've said, here, in the meetings, everywhere else, anybody who has called me, I have not denied one person who has called me who wants to sit down and talk about any topic on this.
I don't think we're required to be silent.
Which I don't, right, I don't have to, don't have to do that, but I've met with anybody that's asked me any side of this thing, and I continue to do so.
I do think we have to be sensitive to the notion that we are trying to make this happen.
Right.
I agree. I agree.
I understand, I think that's an excellent point, Dick.
To the end, last, last question.
Sure.
One of the things that we've said from the very beginning is, one of the major issues is how we ensure, we've used the word ensure, we've used the word guarantee, that , that students in Walden and Incorporated Hamilton County will be attending, should this district come into fruition. Is that the question we, slash Phil, is looking at, is there a way to guarantee that that's going to happen?
Instead of looking at the different options?
Right.
Individuals?
Is that, is that, because then if we're looking at option, is this a rock solid guarantee, yes or no?
Right.
Is this a rock solid guarantee, yes or no? Well, one way it can be done is to have the law changed, okay? That means then that the current law does not allow it.
Right.
So do we then shift gears and become advocates and pursue something that would make it happen? And that, that's one of the questions that I see is really gonna, for that, just, I don't know, it's gonna, it's gonna slap us in the face.
That's an excellent point.
If, if we change gears on that topic, and before we have a definitive answer to the original question.
And you can't, I meant to, that, that, the question of Mr. Exton's editorial letter, but we're talking, when we say all the kids on the mountain, we're, we're thinking of the present kids on the mountain.
Not squatchy, yeah.
And, you know, a, a, a huge unforeseen population that would create a real, we couldn't accommodate.
No, but there's no guarantee now.
Can we talk?
I know.
Can we talk about, I'm, I'm trying to define it.
You said there's no guarantee now, but we have talked about, I mean, that's been part of our, we, we want to guarantee that all those children in the President 37377 can, could go to that school.
Right.
Well, I think one of the options, though, is, is the school board drawing a boundary, so it would be as it is now.
But that's, that's what we have to get clarified.
Now, you don't need any questions, this, this is just pure numbers, if, if, if a development is built on the adds a substantially greater number of students to the pool, that exceeds the present capacity of the school set, you don't have to go very far to exceed the, the capacity of Thrasher, and, and.
Or the high school.
And no one's, and even the high school community room. So how do you guarantee that you're gonna accept all those students when you don't have the capacity to guarantee?
Washington Hamilton County.
It doesn't have to call the district, it doesn't have to.
Honestly.
So that, that's why I think the, the district question is the, the most important question of this whole thing, and, and I think, well, if we, if we launch off into a, an idea of.
But then if you're guaranteeing them, yeah, if you're guaranteeing them first place, however you do it, in a local agreement, writing in the referendum, changing state law, whatever, but you're guaranteeing that, and you have that, excuse me, and you have that growth.
You better have the capacity.
Yeah, we, we are then obligated to grow the high school, the elementary schools, to continue to meet.
Place for that.
Right.
Yeah, so.
Yep, no, I agree, I mean, I.
And that's, that's one of the difficult aspects of these things, but, but that is the thing, if growth happens, the fear is guarantee doesn't mean guarantee.
There's a one now.
If growth happens, then there are ones that are gonna be left behind and said, "Well, you know, we're gonna have to..."
It'll be left behind right now.
Then we, 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 what we're trying to
Whether you're guaranteed, right.
What, what, what can we reasonably?
There's, there's been, God, I hate to even bring it up, I'm not gonna bring it up, never mind.
And that, and I was taking, but really, as we say, that's one of the major issues, we're really gonna figure out exactly what that issue is, what we're trying to determine.
Is that, are you talking about the, the huge development, 339 acres out on Robert Bell Road?
I think that's only a tip there, I, you know, the school, we talk about magnet schools, and I think Signal Mountain School is not a magnet school technically, but it's a magnet. That's, that, you know, it's not an accident that some of these build, you know, it's
Magnetism drawing?
Yeah.
And I think that's just the beginning. Whether, whether the Signal Mountain District occurs or not, I think that, that, that this activity, hang on, it has, has equipped a body of citizens to realize that they have power, and they'll use it to, to lobby, or whatever, Hamilton County for more consideration and more resources and better attention of what goes on in Signal Mountain, just so that we can take care of ourselves. But, that's, that means the school is gonna, whether it becomes an independent district or remains part of H C D E, I can't
C D.
The school's gonna improve, not decline.
Goes back to the main question.
And that's the draw.
Right.
Right.
And so, this, this issue, you know, like, and, and, and if, if, if I have implications more than the school district, I just have implications
I wanna try to, I wanna try to come to resolution to your point, and resolution to this to move forward. Does it make sense, before we even have the public meeting with the folks, and so that's before the 11th, what's, what's today?
First.
First, that we have a meeting with Phil and talk about those things? Amy suggested a meeting with Phil to talk about the buildings and what our direction is on what he's looking for, as opposed to mine, which was, "Hey, can you tell me what these three options are and what the results of them are?"
Can we have a private meeting?
One of, one of, you said you, you, you
Just on the legal piece, yes, but an open meeting, but the legal piece of it will
The district part would be open in the
The second, second question in the conference, after they asked us when we, when we first became aware of the project, was a question about racial makeup. You talk about trying to make a, a response to that, but I believe personally, just based on the fact that I'm old enough, I have enough experiences, and, and lived through growing up in, not growing up in this house, but spent a lot of time in this house. A request for a special district on top of this mountain is not gonna receive, you receive normally at the state level. And it's gonna be, and, and I think it's basically the history of racial segregation, because those special districts, I believe, and I don't have this for a fact, but I think it's be pretty easy.
Historically, they were
Historically, special districts created to establish racial segregation in the South, and maybe in the South in particular. It's hard for us to defend, but, because of what we are, like I said in the meeting, we are what we are.
I think your question would be better directed toward the people coming in Monday, because they probably have to deal with that issue too.
Well, they had a more legitimate, like, we are already 99%
Yeah, what we learned from going there is, that was the lawsuit they faced. There was not a lawsuit over the school buildings, there was not a lawsuit over attendance and those things. The lawsuit they faced was the NAACP coming to them and suing them on, because they felt this was a racial issue. So they went through years, I think, John, years of a lawsuit on the racial issue, by the time it came to buildings and everything else, everybody was so over and tired of the lawsuits, they just said, "Hey, okay, $10 quit claim for the buildings and pay us X amount for teachers' tenures and, and they're, they're yours type thing." Is that sort of close?
But there was a racial implication.
Yeah, it was way on the front end of it.
Without doubt.
Which, and there was a big lawsuit on it.
But it's, it's different, because of geography, and the fact that the makeup of our communities are what they are based on partly geography, but partly social, this year, well, but I can't imagine, and maybe I'm wrong, but I can't imagine that we would be granted a special school district status.
But does it
Well, again, that's a matter of us doing our homework and looking, you know, you call Hazelwood, you call Watson, you call Gardenheimer, and say, "How do you think this would go?"
Can I ask a question, though?
He's on the education, he's on the educational board, though, so I knew he'd be closer to it than Patsy or Bo.
My, my thought has always been
So you take that one off the, I'm sorry.
Cut off every time.
No, I'm, 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 I'm not gonna, and I'm giving back to you.
So you take that off the table?
Well, it takes everything off.
Why?
If you're not gonna create a special district, you're not gonna guarantee any.
You know that for a fact?
I know.
Okay. Interesting, I think you
No, I don't vote for a fact.
Okay, well, that's my point, I think, I think you can do it by including the language in a referendum.
But let's hear what Amy has to say.
We wanna know until Phil tells us.
Well, all, I was just gonna say, when you, when, you know, that, we bring up the topic of where everybody gets
We have to talk about it.
Absolutely, and I agree, but my understanding is, and, and, like you said, we are what we are, I mean, we are 99, I think, point eight percent white right now, all of our three schools. We have no ability to change that, but it's my understanding as an independent school district, we can create our school, we can include diversity, we can open up enrollment to increase diversity, so I don't see why we would be turned down by the state when we could actually, we have no control over it right now, zero, to change the diversity, and you're right, it is what it is, and it just is. But if we have the opportunity to increase diversity, I don't see why the state would be, we can't get any more white, to, for lack of a better word.
We could go on forever on all these things, so can we figure out?
Well, since we're there
No, no, yeah, we might
And it's really quick. But, Phil might have been there, but you were there, we all sat when we heard Keith McDonald say, when we were in, when we were in Nashville, Legislative Conference, we weren't there for that one, that this, the racial component of this thing was absolutely, from the NAACP lawsuit aside, he was talking about just within the community, it was the hardest part of the entire thing, the most divisive thing, and the thing that made him physically ill. And appropriate, accurate, true, false, it, it doesn't matter, this is a larger national issue that, I agree with Dick completely, we put ourselves kind of like right in the middle of that, and that focus, that spotlight will shine upon us, which is another reason why I wanna go one level higher to talk about
I don't think the state will, that, that's why I concluded.
What happened to be go to the state and said, "We, you know, will commit in this," kinda like when you hand out, you say, "I'm gonna buy a fire station, but we'll commit to double the diversity up here."
Anything could happen, Chris, I just think
Well, that's what I'm saying, but I mean, there's, until we get answers on how we get there, I don't know if we can.
It's a political question. Any opinion you get from an individual is the sole respect of data.
Yeah, no, such a complicated
That, that doesn't mean anything to the level of respect of data that is, is, is combined with all the other respects of data that come along with the political decision.
I think all this
So you don't know?
Yeah, and I think all this feeds back, this entire discussion from where we started around back to here, is there's more work to be done. All right, we got a great report from SSVC, there's more homework, there's more questions out there, there's more for us to think about, more people for us to talk to, to hear from the citizens, to, to, all that good stuff. With that said, let's bring it back full circle, where do we wanna go, what are the next steps that we wanna go to from here? First is, we wanna have a, a meeting, a, a public meeting after, in conjunction with our, our regular meeting on 12/11.
Yes.
To allow the citizens, we may not have the answers to these other questions yet, but to allow a, a vent and a, a temperature taking.
And I would suggest that you put a limit on the time that you have of that meeting, because if you're
What's everybody okay with, that's the question?
I mean, you talk about the ones coming up on the 11th.
On December 11th, right.
I, I would say limit it to, because otherwise they're gonna be making long statements as opposed to
Right, so, so
Oh, the time went on.
So it's, it's a minute?
Minute? That's too short.
You didn't ask the question. It's a minute, it's too late to
Well, given our normal
Well, if they're asking a question, they can ask a question in a minute, it's the, it's the dissertation that are, go on for, like, ask a question and happy to answer it.
I'm from here, and we never did this way, and this and that, that's fair, they wanna get that off their chest, that's half of why we're doing this, 'cause they wanna get that off their chest and be able to comment on that, so I think we gotta allow them to.
My friend Don is here, so Don, start asking questions, watch this, I'm ready, we're up here. Do you say, "Don," I love you, that's why I'm saying this, you say, "Don, I need you to get to a question, because our time is short, and there are other people we wanna be heard of," and that's, you're the, you're the chairman of the meeting.
Well, I'd rather not, I hate interrupting people when they're in the middle of their thoughts, I know, that's gonna be Is three minutes okay?
Why don't we have Phil do that?
I think one's too short. Dick, I'm sorry, I just
How about Phil does it instead of you? Because you're gonna be, you're gonna be the target of a lot of questions.
I don't care. Hell.
You can cut them off.
In, in my mind, you need to have a time limit for each person that's gonna ask a question on there, give them an opportunity to do that.
And I'm not gonna have a time limit that you're gonna allow the meeting to continue. Okay, and I don't like this, "Hey, can I have your three minute thing so I can go on my diatribe," so, no swapping of minutes, whatever we count the time to be, either get up and talk or you don't.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Is three okay, or you want longer or shorter?
I think reasonable people can have reasonable conversations and just watch it themselves and say, "We're short on time, we don't wanna impose a bunch of rules that stymie conversation," because you might have someone that says, "Chris, this," and you say, "This," and they say, and they have legitimate follow-up questions, and at any point, you can say, "I hate to cut you off, we're gonna have more of these, but we wanna hear from other people," and
So you're advocating no time limit? I'm just trying to get to
I could, no, we already have a time limit, we have a three minute thing that people are used to.
So three minutes?
Yep.
Are you okay? Everybody, three, there you go, three minutes.
Three minutes to ask and answer questions, or three minutes to ask your questions?
Just let
Because in theory, that's a great idea, but this is not the kind of topic that lends itself to, it, it just hasn't been at all.
We haven't even done this yet.
Well, when we, when we address the council, for the last year, we've
Three minutes.
Three minutes.
Three minutes.
Let's just say three minutes, use some comments.
Okay. So we're doing that, I'm, at, at the council's approval, I wanna try to set up a meeting with us and H C D E or with their council at some point to field public questions. Is that okay that I set that up? Are you guys okay with that?
Is, is that basically what they're trying to schedule, had scheduled?
That's, I called them, I'm like, I'm like, "For Christ's sakes, just call us and ask, you know, why don't you work with us to schedule this instead of just making a public announcement?" Part of the
So that meeting is the council, is that correct?
I don't, I don't think they liked my comments back, and he called me right away, and he said, "We'll work with you, we'll schedule it," and I said, "Good, I think this'll be great, let's, why don't we communicate?" I've been trying to communicate with them. So, if you guys are okay, I'll try to set one of those.
I'm gonna be clear, are you setting up something where we're gonna sit down with them and talk, as a group, that's public, that people can watch?
No. I'm gonna set down something where the public comes to it and asks us all questions who are on the stage, which is H C D E and Town Council and
Would it be beneficial, would it be beneficial to do that first thing first, to where we actually have
I don't know, that's, that's not what they proposed, I'm, I'm going off what they proposed, well, they didn't even propose it, they just kinda demanded it. I think, I don't, I don't know, I don't care, you wanna do that first?
That's what I'm asking, what do you think about that? So we just, again, to calm things down, let them know, we care about the students, you care about the students, we're all on the same page.
All right.
So we, so we have this, have a discussion like we're doing now.
That's another meeting.
Hey, extraordinary proposals required.
I like, I like your idea of two in January and one in February where the Town Council engages, I think that'll give us enough time to at least get a little additional information.
But let's make sure everyone can be there, that's the only thing, 'cause that, I hated to miss that
Did you have the schedule?
I don't have, I needed to know what you, if you guys were free, so
Can you circulate date, potential dates for January and February to avoid, and then have them send it to all of us and see if those work?
Would it be possible to have it in our January council meeting, also have another meeting where we're gonna go into a session that's an open
I really think that if you're trying to have a meeting with the Hamilton County School Board or the Hamilton County Commission, if that's involved in here, you're gonna have to do that at whatever time they can do it, 'cause it's not gonna be, it's your regularly scheduled meeting, you're gonna have to go together as groups and try to find out what times are available, 'cause you got nine bodies or nine members of each one of those bodies, and it's gonna be difficult to try to get them all together, so you need to try to sort dates, figure out if you all can meet together for a special group meeting at those times.
Is it okay if I try to coordinate that?
Yes, please do.
Okay.
So I don't wanna leave this yet, do we need to, does it need to be the entire group, and also how does Sunshine, how, how does open meetings figure into that if several of us are having a meeting with them? If it's just the principals, perhaps, since, I don't mean the principals of the schools, but the principal, they have some representatives to have a meeting with the Signal Mountain Town Council.
They have to publicize it.
There's some job in line of that, I mean, that, that's not
There needs to be a notification that that meeting is going
As long as we advertise that everything's fine.
Anytime that that happens, then that's fine, that there's a notification that a meeting will occur so the public can be there, and at that point in time, the bodies don't have to take any action if they don't choose to. So I mean, you're
So just have a discussion
Sure. Just back and forth without
So we could video it and also share that.
You want, you want, you want either and video.
Yes.
You want that meeting before we engage the public?
I'm asking if you guys think that's a good idea, 'cause we're trying to be open and create goodwill, there's, what, I'll tell you, as a council member, as a citizen, and somebody whose grandchildren are starting in the school system soon, right now, I'm just guessing, if this thing went to referendum, I'm guessing it's going to go to referendum, I can't predict that, but I'm guessing, I'm thinking if it went to referendum, it would fail, and if this happens after eight, 10 months, a year of going through this, and there's been all this animosity built, I don't like what we've done to our, so what I'm getting at is, I, I'm agreeing with you guys, there are things we don't have to rush, there are some things we need to do because the time is now, but we can have, if it takes a while to get that meeting scheduled, and we all sit down together and we have this conversation, that's good, that's open, and we can, generally, when you look at people face to face, animosity goes down, because you get a chance to work through stuff
Okay, I, I, nobody's disagreeing, I'd really like to get to resolution of this issue and move on, and I understand, you've said that, I agree, we're all on the same page now, I'm gonna try to schedule that meeting, what else do we wanna schedule? Do we wanna schedule year two? Is it okay if she emails Boyd and
Are we gonna invite the mayor from Walden to this?
We wanna have a meeting with Walden independently?
Let's get all, let's start with two meetings in January. How about all of us as council members email him three dates that we can all meet, including Phil?
Do we want
We will decide our two January meetings based on what, that all we, all of us can be there together, does that work? Let's get those two done.
Generally, you want that to come him proposing some things, and then we tell him if you can, because he's, you go 31 days in January and six people, five people?
Okay, let's do it now, who's available to 18?
We're not gonna do that, just, just send, send a series of dates, you, you take this, this is you, take it, send a series of dates to him, and then we'll send it everybody out, see if we can So that's two in January, one in February, plus we wanna have a meeting with
Walden.
When do we want that to occur, and is it okay if I set it up?
I guess my question was, are we inviting them to this, this series of meetings while everybody's asking, I, I, that's my question.
Yeah, I don't think
Because, like, you know, when someone asks about that component, is it, they're gonna rely on your contact information as opposed to Dan's concern that it's not open? So I, I was just trying to figure that one out.
Do you wanna wait on scheduling the Walden one until it gets a little closer? Till we, till we think it's, it's important to do?
Okay, so we have one scheduled meeting now, December 11th.
Right.
I'm gonna work on two in January.
Right.
Get your times up.
Two in January, one in February.
One.
Last, last question, last question, do we want that one where we combine the, one of these three that we have set, is that gonna be one that we want to do where the public can address both H C D E and us? Do we want one of those to be that?
Well, we, we have, we're completely dependent on their schedule, so I think that's the fourth meeting, which it'll be just whatever they say, they can meet us, right? fourth meeting, which it'll be just whatever they say, they can meet us, right?
Do you all want a meeting with just us and them, no public involved, other than invited to the meeting before then?
The meeting that they had scheduled that they notified you with this reason, was that the setup that was going to be us and them with us fielding questions?
From the public.
From the public.
I like that.
Dan suggested we meet with them first without fielding questions from the public. But I also think they involved, they included not only HCD, the HCD board, us, but also the county commissioners were invited to be on that stage. So you had three different groups on that stage, my understanding, that would then field questions from the audience.
The problem I have with that, not to belong to this because it's just, the problem I have with that is, it sets us up defensively.
Yeah.
And the more we defend...
The more we look like we're promoting.
The more we look like we're promoting.
Yeah.
And I don't, and I think that's a mistake.
Thank you.
If people want, if people want to ask the HD...
HCD.
HCD.
Yeah, questions.
Let them ask them?
Let them ask them. The idea of joint meeting is, I think, is awkward and not, and it will become a lot of ostering and...
Sure. So it's, it's not an unreasonable thing to have a counterproposal for the reasons that you're saying. So we'd like to actually just sit down with you where we all get a chance to talk about it.
Without the public?
I like that.
Okay. Good. So that's only one meeting with them. Do we want that to be one of the two in January, one in February, or do we want that to be separate? Do we want it before, in the middle, or after? Just so I have some sort of parameters. Just to throw it out there. I don't care.
Too many choices. Could we wait and determine that in a work session before the...
Two in February.
February? You want to wait that long?
End of January. I still don't understand why we can't pick a date right now. Like, we, we, we're here at the table.
Can we do it at the end of January?
We can decide when we can meet.
I think we should meet with HCD before our series of meetings go on. Because I think it will answer questions and I think, what happens if they come to us and say, "Hey, look, we've already announced a pilot for later start times and I'm absolutely 100 convinced, 100% convinced because it's from our study. Hey, we'll do later start times. We'll now, we'll now pay for art teachers and theater teachers where we don't pay for those now in the, in the smaller elementary schools."
They do pay.
No, they don't.
Theater in the high school.
Not in the elementary.
High school, make sure you don't get flamed.
Yeah. They don't pay any arts classes in the elementary schools.
True.
You know, and we'll do this and we say, "Hey, you know what? That's great. Let's just put this thing to bed and thank you for addressing our concerns." So I think that if we have that before those other two meetings, I think it allows us to, to, another avenue to...
I think it's going to be beneficial to us also.
To understand.
I had a conversation with, um, one, what, he's on the...
Without telling us?
Yeah. He stopped right after the meeting, after the conference. You should have been there. Anyway.
Fuck.
No, he stayed and pulled me aside. I mean, he really wanted to talk to me for some reason. But the purpose of his conversation was to impress upon me the changes that was from super technical.
I like it. Dr. Johnson's awesome.
He convinced me that there, there was a lot of change, that it's not stimulated the course, seriously entirely by your work.
Understand.
But I think it would be beneficial for us to get an appreciation for what's going on and what can, what we can...
About a month and a half ago, I had coffee with Dr. Johnson, just him and I up here at Mayfly. And contrary to Rory Exum and his exceptional...
How does he?
I don't know. But he had said in that article, that's part of why a lot of that wasn't true, but he said that we'd never met together. And we have. And I very much, and I actually reported to this board, I'm sure it's somewhere in there, that we did meet. And I think he is a very dynamic, very neat guy and I think, I think he has some excellent ideas to address the needs of all students in the county. So I think this will be a very impactful meeting if we have this HCD meeting. So...
Well, I would tell you at least, and probably Mr. Bennett will tell you as well, that if the entire Hamilton County School Board is meeting and y'all are meeting together, you're going to have to publish and notice that meeting.
That's fine.
Yes.
But it's, it's not a public meeting where we have everybody commenting.
You don't have to have everybody asking questions. You can actually meet just like we're doing today.
At some point, you actually have to have the actual sun.
You do.
You have to like a little bit over the...
I think that's...
We good?
Yeah.
All right. Good. Anything else on that? Awesome. Thank you all. Sorry to make you stay longer. And last thing on that, there is a meeting Monday, who knows about this? Monday?
I don't know.
Tuesday? Monday or Tuesday in the gymnasium that's going to have three or four of the folks from Memphis that the SSBC heard from. And my understanding is they're not answering questions about or making suppositions if it's a good idea for us to do it, but they're basically trying to answer, are going to answer questions on their experience in going through it. What were the pitfalls? What were the goods? What were the bads? What happened that they didn't expect or plan for? What, you know, all that good stuff.
Do you know if we, the council, can ask them questions?
I'll see why not.
Okay.
Casey said they're, she want, they want questions submitted.
Ahead of time, I think.
Ahead of time, but I asked, because I asked her today and she said they're going to keep the last 15, I forget if she said 15, 15 or something like that. I mean, 15 or 20 for people to ask questions, but they will not have a microphone.
Staff, do you have any other, any direction on any of that? You need anything?
I think I'm good. The only suggestion I might make, and I have scheduled meetings from January, I think the best way to approach it is if you can send me the dates you are not available, there are probably fewer of those than dates you are. So if you just tell me the dates that are out, I think that's a good way to...
Would you mind taking the ball and working with Bo on that though?
I don't know.
These are meetings.
Don't go like you did that. Let's keep it here right now.
I think we got it.
We're available this day.
To be able to allow everybody to attend. All right. Thank you. Next, and Ron, I know you've been here for a long time on this. Yeah, yes. And Water System RFP, can you give us an update?
I'm going to take that off the agenda.
We're going to handle that next time. Sorry, guys.
Thanks for coming.
Basically, this is, I hesitate to say this, this could be pretty straight to do in some ways. Seattle works a lot and Phil can really get where we are at the last phases of putting the RFP together and...
Thank you, Ms. Hall.
Okay.
So one of the things that's complicated, this whole process, is things that have nothing to do with this whole process, such as school systems and other things. Really just wanted to come up and say, we're, we're very close to being ready to put it out if you're willing to move forward. One of the things that we will need to do in conjunction with that is starting to try to get an evaluation of the system done at the same time. So that's something that we would need to work on. I think we're in a position that we could, we could advertise and put this out in the next couple of weeks.
Being, this just came up, being an asset of the town, does it have to go to planning commission beforehand?
Yes.
Before we put it out to bid?
No, not before you accept anyone.
Okay.
We would have to, just like...
Right now, we're looking at options.
We would have to know what it is that's on the table before they can consider it. So that, that will come at a latter stage.
When can we expect it to hit the street?
Right now, our tentative schedule has it only out on the 15th.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Good. I'm interested to see what comes back.
This is sale or operation.
Correct.
Or we just keep it?
Well, the RFP doesn't probably say that. The RFP is just to find out the...
The proposition will be, and I believe we have it worded now, that there's technically a third option that would be, well, and there are other options built into it, whether it would be a sale with acquisition of land, a property, or sale with them leasing the property from us, things like that. Maybe even the potential for a lease purchase.
Lease purchase.
Arrangement. So there are two basic options with some internal options for each of those. And the idea is to give a basic outline and have them tell us what they would be interested in doing. And not just one or the other, but hopefully in both scenarios. So we have, we don't have one entity that wants to do one thing, another entity wants to do another. We have how they both would approach.
And we have options.
Right.
We are complete with our, our current...
The...
The firewall?
The boring they're doing down at Laurel is the last part of that. And so it's almost complete.
What's our status as far as the water company is concerned, the fact that, correct me if I remember to say correctly, we are actually working in a negative status right now that we're paying more money than we're taking in. Because doesn't the state jump in and we can't do that for long, right?
Right. Right now, we have not passed on the rate increases relative to the infrastructure surcharges. But with this project, if we maintain the system, we're going to, we're going to have to do that. So we're looking at significant increase.
Are we in trouble yet though?
No, we're fine right now.
Okay. I mean, as far as, if we got monitored or anything?
No, we just didn't get audited.
I think our reserves in there are about three to four million. What, four million?
It's closer to three.
Yeah. So it's, we're just, the loss is being absorbed by the reserves.
I will say that it's probably damn closer to two now because we did just...
Because we just did, saying we've been absorbing the loss.
Right. But I don't, and again, I may not be understanding this, this is super technical stuff, but we are not even allowed to operate out of a loss.
Whether, if, if there are consecutive years of negative change in net position, then we could have an issue. But again, with the million dollars that we just spent, we just invested a million dollars into the system.
And it's a, it's a...
How that happens. If we just lost that money, that would be one thing. We just spent a million dollars to improve the system.
And the law comes to a net and they take in, in consideration your reserves. So we're really not at a loss because we've got $3 million in the bank type thing. You going to, you follow that?
I do.
Okay. Anything else on that?
There's a portion of most of us.
I look forward to it going out.
One of the things I want to make sure the council is comfortable with, and I've gone back and forth on this several times, when we were establishing the evaluation committee, currently we have the mayor's on there and several members of staff. And we're going to request that MTAS utility consultant participate as well. You want at least one person on the outside.
Can I get off that?
Well, only if I can. My preference, not discussing what your request, but my preference would be to not be on that committee. So that, that committee meets, formulates an opinion, that's presented to me at that time. Phil and I review it and go over it. And that's another step before it comes to council. And that puts me in a position, and I've done this...
Some objective.
When I hired a department head, when I hired, we hired Chief Williams, I had an interview panel conduct an interview that I wasn't even in the room. And then I interviewed him independently. Then I heard from the panel to see how my perception and their perception felt, or if it did. And that's what got me thinking about this. I would really like to see an independent assessment of the value of the proposals done and then be able to look at it with Phil independently of that and see and make sure that we're coming to the same conclusion. So that when we sit down with council, if there are issues that we see differently, we can, we tell you that. Committee says this, but when we looked at it, we kind of have a concern about this.
Can Sam take this up?
Sam is on there. But...
Carol?
If council, I believe Carol's already on there. Now, the question is, is it okay that I'm not on there?
That's fine with me. I don't know.
And then we handle it that way.
Finally.
Is everybody comfortable with that?
Yes.
And those were the recommendations, at least I made in the last version on here, that you'd have a selection committee and then you'd have an evaluation by the town manager after that's done. And then you have a determination by the council. And that way you've got hopefully independent information from two different groups. And the fact of having someone from the outside that doesn't really have a dog in the hunt from the MTAS, I think is a good person to be on your selection committee.
We good with that? I want to, if we're done with that issue, I also want to thank Ron and WRUD, which was not done because we asked or the price, is my understanding correct?
Correct.
And we did not pay for it or sports boosters or the school didn't, but they ended up putting an eagle on one of the water tower and it looks awesome. I mean, it looks awesome. And I've heard nothing but great things. Thank you. And that's not even in our town limits. I think that's the one that's a lot cheaper, right over to Hamilton County.
Is that the one you can see from the football stadium?
It's the one you can see from the, did you do it on both sides or just one?
Sure.
All right. You're not going to see it from the football stadium because it's on the opposite side. You'll see it at the New Mexican Restaurant right across the street that's about to open, where the double bear is.
New Mexican Restaurant?
Thank you very much. All right. I apologize. We are not done yet and I actually have a list of things to do. Can we take a five-minute break, please? Because I've got to go.
Go for it.
Bobby? I don't, I don't, we'll get to her, we'll get to her board reports, but let's go back in order. Dick, do you have any board reports?
No.
No? Can you guys, just give us an idea, is there anything controversial on the planning commission going on? Because I get calls all the time and I don't know anything going on.
There's not anything.
Do you expect that Knox Company or whatever it is?
What is called the Kaufman Way development. It's not Kaufman Way, but you know.
Oh, the one behind Guthrie's?
Yeah. That's, I expect that to be a reaction.
But not on that meeting. Not on that meeting.
So we're good. You, I mean, library boards all good with everything we did?
I blame you.
They're happy?
My weekend.
Okay. Beautiful.
The DRC didn't meet.
Did not meet.
Wait, are we sharp? Thank you guys. Now you start running?
The Centennial Committee, Tyra suffered concussion and so...
Oh my God, is she okay?
Yeah, she's better now. She's going to, there's going to be a meeting tomorrow at 9:00 at the library on the Centennial. But things that she did want me to bring up today were, they're going to take out an ad at the first of the year advertising everything they've done as far as...
First of the 2018?
Right.
Okay.
And then the...
Well, the other thing is, Bobby, is Dick or somebody brought to our attention that that week is not a good week because it's Easter, Easter or spring break. That week you're planning on having the Centennial Week Committee Celebration. All the schools are out.
That first weekend is spring break.
So they have to look back at that and will have to re-invite folks basically.
Sound this week, you mean?
Yep. They just need to check.
Right now, they have it Thursday through Thursday and that first Thursday through Sunday is spring break.
It's vacation. For Hamilton County, I would encourage them to check because it's different for the spring breaks for Baylor, McCauley, GPS, CCS or CS, C, C, where your kids go, CCS and Notre Dame.
I know they address some of that in discussion, but why they arrived at that, I can't be...
Would you have them check that though, just so?
Also, they're going to be doing their second meeting with the Alexian Brothers because the Alexian Brothers has that older room that, I mean, the older, you know, they were thinking about hosting a lot of the things.
Is that next Tuesday? Patrick called me and asked me to go to that meeting with Alexian. Are you comfortable with that?
Okay, yeah. No problem.
All right. I forgot totally.
And then the only, the lifestyle, the seven lifestyle sections, the only one that they have in there was sports. I believe they had the government meeting.
Well, your problem is they're all different leagues run by different people. That's going to be tough.
Yeah. And so I don't, I don't have an answer how they'll accomplish that. And because the website is still downloading information like what they're going to do with the website and dates, they haven't populated that website with everything that they could. But I'll get an answer on the...
Dave Wagner may be a good guy to coordinate the sports piece of this if you want to tell them because he heads up the Flag Football League. He announces at every one of the baseball games. He's not as involved in basketball, but he knows the folks. There's a guy who knows, has his hands in a little bit of each of them.
I'd like to get your contact, that contact.
All right, will do.
So that's basically all I have.
Great.
I got one thing, um, and Jared's not here to add, so I just wanted to throw this.
This is the board report.
Yeah, I know, talking about Rick.
Cause we weren't here when we started, I'm just, sorry.
I can't help that you started without me, I mean, you guys cut me off and then you start without me. It's just getting worse.
I apologize.
I know.
Oh my goodness.
So you had some.
So Mark Wyatt, who is.
Can I stop you there?
Oh my God, I swear.
Just joking, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm getting punchy.
I'm sorry.
I've been here way too long.
I'm sorry.
Anyway, so Mark Wyatt, who is one of the commissioners of, um, baseball up here, the, he contacted me, the batting cages got destroyed in the hurricane water, whatever, I mean, they're gone. What?
Town Hall was?
Town Hall, Town Hall. Um, the, and I have limited information on this, but I want to throw it out there, um, they have a substantial amount of money that they want to contribute to rebuild the batting cages, but they would like some input on how it goes since they're putting a sizable investment in that. I just texted Jared because we had to move our meeting, so we will be meeting on the 13th. Is there anything else that I need, this is my first time kinda dealing with this kinda stuff, what do I need to do to get that ball rolling?
I tell you, we need to know, this is kinda like I was talking about before, that we have kind of a template for something like this, that we want to enter into agreement with them about, they, they want to give this amount of money, but they want to use this specific way, then we can outline what that project is, how it's gonna be done, as long as council approves it and everybody's on the same page, they make a donation to the town, town does the project, and we, we.
So I can facilitate that with him and have him submit to me the proposal, and then we, then I bring it to council.
That, or you're welcome to have him send it to me.
Oh, even better, okay.
Anything else on that?
Um, no, we haven't met, we've just had trouble.
Does the basketball league have enough space this year? Do you know?
I don't know, but, I mean, we are always fighting for space.
It's getting bad.
I know, like, we have eight o'clock practices going on for middle schoolers, which is obviously a problem, you know, with they.
They start the same time the high school does, right? Six, whatever, seven, seven a.m.? Middle school and high school start at the same time?
Oh yeah, yeah, seven twenty, but you have to leave your house at six forty-five to get there, even if you live a mile away.
Is the eagle project?
Yes.
It looks awesome too. Did a good job, did a really good.
They did a fantastic job, and it is working very well.
Some pictures, that's a great idea.
You know what, I can get him to do that, if that's on.
The, the project, you're talking about the sidewalk?
You've seen it, right?
Yeah, he's right.
I mean, I thought we were gonna get that guy back up here for mayor for a minute.
We should.
Yeah.
He did a great job.
He's such a good kid.
Um, is that it?
I have personnel, I have.
We had a parks board meeting, um, and they're working on various projects, but I've had a couple complaints from citizens that I took to, to, the complaint to the Parks Board, which is, they're seeing more and more four-wheelers ATVs on the parks trails. I believe that most of this is outside of our town trails, but we know that that group has always done all the trails no matter what, so I express that opinion to them, because families now are scared to walk on those trails because they're, because of the four-wheelers. So they're dealing with, hey, and it's outside our purview, but, you know, how do we address that? I just want everybody to know that. Um, yes.
Does it say that we don't have a four-wheeler park in the town?
I don't think we do, the.
I don't think in the town, I think.
Rainbow Lake area.
It's more the state park.
Or significant trail areas.
You know, they're where Bob lives, I mean, that's where they all, that's the.
But they're in front of the. Yeah, that's on, right, right to the, if you're looking at Bob's house, right to the left, there is kinda where, they're not supposed to be in there, but that's where they go because nobody ever kicks them out, but that's the state, yeah.
But the state's not really enforcing that.
No, state's not enforcing it, and in the back of that, they end up running into the trails, which aren't on our town property, but are on state property.
Yeah, I mean, all of it's state property, the, the, the state wants it enforced, but they, they don't have the presence really to do it.
And you get, and I don't know if there's something we can do, they're looking into how, how we solve it, if there's something they can do where the state would allow us to help enforcement, I don't know if we'd want to do that, I'm sure Phil just rolled over in his car.
They're our friends, they're state friends.
They're not our trails, yeah, they're at the school, so you got families who go to those trails and want to walk the trails and this and that, but they're scared of getting hit by four-wheelers.
There's an answer, and having the name, gentleman with Tennessee River Bridge.
Rick Houghline.
So Rick Houghline said what they generally do, all, none of these groups have the personnel to keep four-wheelers off, the answer to keep four-wheelers off is to get hikers off. It's to do whatever you can to put hikers on those trails, because they have cell phones and they call and they sell police, so, so that's generally the answer, just ask if there is one.
A definite chicken and egg, one of the things they did say though is they've got these big steel bars they put right in the middle of the trail, so the four-wheelers can't get on it, but you can still hike it. So that's what they were talking about.
They go around it, but then you got another issue, is the mountain bikers, because they go pretty fast too.
Yeah.
And, um, so it's not gonna, um, probably be as damaging, but you could get seriously hurt by getting hit by a mountain biker.
At the same time, that group.
And you're not hearing them.
Well, the Parks Board has been approached by mountain bikers and people who want to do that, I think that's a pretty neat outdoor sport, and can they assign some trails for mountain biking and then some trails for hiking, so that's what they're.
Yeah, and just so you know, the mountain biking community in Signal Mountain right now is doing a large portion of the trail maintenance that takes place.
Right.
These are the guys, when the tree goes down, they fix it.
They're trying to work together on all that.
Yeah, and Rick Houghline's also said, they've kind of, they've gotten a more comfortable relationship with them, you know, I mean, than everybody's like, oh, well, the bicycles do more damage than walkers.
Interestingly, uh, I have talked to Rick Houghlines, they recently hired, um, the person Audrey Nord, who was the, on the sports boosters in charge of finances there, she's very good with finances, and she's just recently taken a job with them, FBI. That's my report, no, no other board report for me. Next is manager's report, what do you got, Bill?
Um, we've talked, touched on this a little back, James Bullard, the last thing we got was a request for an updated cost estimate and the text to be used to advertise the bid, which is from their template, so that shouldn't be an issue, so it looks like that's the last piece, so that, and then we're working on that this week, so.
So, yeah, that's, again, that's a bid process that we haven't even entertained gentlemen.
Well, then it'll be advertised and the bids will be evaluated and we'll choose a contractor and all that, but if this, at least given, given what they're asking for, a, a current updated bid est- or a cost estimate and what the ad for the bids is gonna say, I'm really optimistic that this, this is the end of the process.
Yeah, it's Christmas present.
So, uh, fire stations underway, you know, they're going to town out there.
Are they?
It looks like they're getting close to the point where they can pour the, the retaining wall and then the actual, um, site work for the building, uh, will go from there, they're, it's been pretty amazing so far. Um, I want to make you aware, something we've discussed in the past, Sam has been working on it and submitted, uh, paperwork to the state for licensing, if that's the right word, for a section of the right-of-way adjacent to Coolidge Park where the monument is, so that we can get full authority over that in terms of being able to build, um, a more appropriate monument with, with a, um, sign like it's down at Signal Point that has historic information and all that on it.
Where is this?
Um, down on the highway where the Coolidge Monument is.
Further down road from the sign.
Oh, all right, but isn't that part of the trust?
No, this is state right-of-way.
Oh.
That's, that's why we have to give permission from the state.
Okay.
To do it, so we're just looking at that section, um, and see how, how that goes. We're also working on kind of a meet the middle best of both worlds approach to replacing the, um, high school championship sign, um, instead of doing something bigger and bulkier and stoned, maybe doing basically the same type of sign, but getting some graphics designed for it so that it will look a lot better and, and maybe make it a little bit larger, so, um, I think the state will have less heartburn with that and it'll certainly be a lot cheaper.
Well, it's, it has to be expandable, we're averaging two state championships a year.
We'll stick posts out, up and down and around.
Basketball by next year.
Um, also, uh, this week, Sam and Jennifer Weaver from the Development District attended a workshop on local park and recreation grants, um, that is the program that, that developed the, this complex originally, is, is a, is a rec complex, tennis courts, swimming pool, ball fields and all of that, um, we've met with Jared and looked at potential projects and we've settled on basically doing, um, a complete renovation of Marion and Driver Fields behind the country clubs, those are oldest, first shaped, um, fields, fields we have, and just completely rebuilding those, new fencing, um, a new bathroom, either where the old one is, or turn that into storage and build a new bathroom, um.
Is he gonna address those distances on the fields that we?
Potentially, potentially.
So this will make Bill happy.
I think they'll start about the infield.
The only thing it won't make him happy about is they've, they've collected a lot of money and thought the infield was gonna happen, so now we have to relate to.
Still, he may still get that, but I don't think they would want us to spend their money and then turn it, turn around.
I understand, I understand.
So we're looking at what we might be able to do in the interim, because this is gonna be a process.
Yeah.
And, you know, if it takes a year or two to get this project off the ground, they, they want something done in the interim, but we don't want to invest eight thousand dollars to just undo it, so we're looking at, again, kind of a, a hat medium and how we can approve it and make it better in the interim, so, um, that's all I've got.
Uh, good, thank you, Bill. Tentative agenda for December eleventh, regular meeting, um, we've added, you know, a separate meeting directly after that meeting, which we will field comments and questions from the public on the SSVC report and the school district issue.
We're gonna call, actually call it a public meeting?
Well, it was my understanding that we were going to incorporate that, and just basically have a, a second citizen's opportunity to address the council.
And we'll still keep other business in adjourn afterwards.
Right.
So if we were to give them a certain time, if they couldn't show up at the beginning of the meeting, how long, do we want to do that or not?
I would, I would hesitate to.
Okay, just say, hey, you gotta be here, you gotta sit through the rest of the meeting.
Why don't we adjourn and do other business before we go into that? Cause then we're stopping that meeting and.
I thought that's what we said when we finished, but I don't, I'm fine with however.
Well, that, uh, that's what happened to me.
It was, it was Dan's suggestion, what's your preference? Have it incorporated with it?
I think it's easy to just.
Close one out, start the other and be done.
So you just said.
Yeah, we said opposite thing, I just didn't, like, we're talking about one thing and then we're gonna go into other business at a, if it's on.
The other business is the wrap-up of the meeting really, but.
Okay.
There isn't, I mean, we ought to be able to.
Whip through this?
Yes, we ought to be able to blast through one through nine without really too much trouble.
So if we get through one through nine and, uh, citizen.
Just suggest that nobody have any other business that night, and we'll be fine.
All right.
Okay, I'm sorry, for the minutes, I'm confused, so we're adding a number ten?
Well, yeah, number ten will now be citizens', um.
Got it.
Opportunity for questions and comments on the SSV, SSVC report and school district issue.
Got it, thank you.
And then eleven becomes other business, twelve becomes adjourn. All good with that?
I'm just amazed about Carol's ability to keep.
So am I, uh, and nothing else, what else is gonna be on there, Bill? As far as resolutions?
We'll have resolution for some purchases, some firefighter equipment, um, and potentially the, the first reading of an ordinance for the zoning change, um, down on Wood Street, which is a, is basically a request to go to a more restrictive zoning, so should not be terribly controversial.
Is it a, is it a spot zoning change?
Well, it is one business that, uh, they want to, it's, right now it's highway commercial, highway commercial doesn't allow, um, daycare centers.
Oh, it's.
And, yeah, and so they want it to down, downzone it, for lack of a better term, to office, so it's right on the edge of the district and it's adjacent to.
Now where again is that at?
Where Cyridge used to be.
Oh, okay, and that's gonna change to a dual district?
No, it's gonna change.
That, that piece of property, it could be zoned office instead of highway commercial.
Daycare center.
You would not have a dual zoning.
It's really not on the highway either, I mean, so.
You can't do a daycare center and commercial zoning, it's currently.
So it's gonna, what's the petition for to go?
Change it to office.
They're going from commercial zoning, just taking one step back to a more restrictive zoning that allows daycare centers.
Lesser screen.
I'm sorry, yeah, however, whichever angle you come from that, anything, any, anything else you think will be on there?
I'm sure you probably.
Okay, but nothing major.
Not wherever right now.
Okay, other business?
Um, I just want to thank the paving job, it was great, um, I like the new back bike path and the roads.
Timber links?
Oh, yeah.
The only thing I would suggest is they get some black spray paint and catch some of those little isolated lines, you know, where, where they're moving to the center of the road.
Oh, oh, that's okay, we'll get that off.
It looks, it looks good.
We still have signs coming that we're gonna put up.
Great job on that trench too.
Couple of days after that was in, I drove over there just to take a look at it, and there was a lady pushing a stroller up, up that lane.
The bike lane?
That's good.
That scares me.
Well, it's better, it's better than the.
I know, I know, I know. I know, I know, I know, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but if you got a, an Ironman trainer on that bike path.
Any other business?
It'd be bad.
Bob?
I'm good.
Other business, other business?
No.
Oh yeah, I was gonna ask, the open house, um, is that?
We haven't scheduled an open house or, or anything for the public works yet.
Do we have a Christmas party this year?
Um, you didn't ask me if I had other business.
Figured it all comes.
Don't ask me.
You didn't get other businesses, all right, all right.
I'm gonna throw a wild card out here at the chief, um, what do you think as far as with the relationship with the Fire Marshal's Office as soon as you can see the MAC getting addressed?
Um, great question.
Don't count your chickens.
I would go for the last phases, I think all the questions have been answered, um, I think what had happened was we kind of got to be a little welcome, making sure all our keys are crossed and I heard about the project.
Now, we, we have the thing tomorrow, the tree lighting, and it's at the MAC where we can go through it and do all that.
It's outside.
Oh, it's all outside?
Well, it's gonna be warm, that's good.
Okay.
It's gonna be.
Okay, that's it.
Uh, Boyd, do you have any other business?
I would like to make council aware of the fact that we're having the Christmas launch in on December the fifteenth.
Okay.
What time?
Eleven thirty in the gym.
Not that it matters, but I'm out of talent, so. You can have my.
Have you had a cheat your day?
Will it be catered by the same folks who've catered in the past? Cause the food was awesome.
Yeah, it was awesome.
Will it be given out, Bill?
Those presents we don't want.
We don't.
Yeah. We're gonna keep that from the public. Any other?
We need to get out of this meeting.
Do you, hey, Carol? Carol, do you have any other business? All right. I do. I've got a lot, so here we go.
Oh, my God.
Sorry. People said I'm not sharing, I'm gonna share.
Two minutes, seconds.
I had, I know, I had a meeting with the, the Women's Guild, asked me to come talk to them and it was this past 10:00 AM Wednesday. It was very educational. I did the same thing when I met with the Lions Club, which I basically gave them a list of 30 projects and things that are going on with the town that we've been working on and then opened up the floor to allow them to ask questions. We talked about the MAC, we talked about the school system, we talked about leaf pickup and all that, but it was, it was neat. There's a lot of neat ladies involved with that, older, younger, in between, and I think they do a lot of good things. I would suggest, and I mentioned to them that they should get with you and the Centennial Committee to become involved with the Centennial Celebration. They are the oldest continuous existing civics group on the mountain.
Who's the president this year?
Oh, God, I knew you were gonna ask me. I don't, I don't remember. Hispanic lady. No, she's Hispanic lady.
Vanessa Swaffer?
That CBS is...
No, no.
I thought she had some connection with that.
Leah?
Somebody Upton. Jamie Upton's the one who invited me to come talk to them, but it's, she's not, Shirley Keys was Signal Mountain Woman of the Year last year. We all know Shirley.
That was Lisa Crowder.
No. I don't think, I don't know.
She was Woman of the Year.
Signal Mountain Women's Guild?
No, Woman of the Year.
I don't, I don't...
Never mind, just keep going. Sorry.
I think that's Woman of the Year of a different group.
Yep.
I've had a lot of good feedback on the T-DOT meeting, by the way, and, and some questions. Have we continued? They had some issues about communications and stuff, have we?
Well, we haven't had any since then, but...
Okay. Anything we need to do is follow...
We have all of those contact folks now, so we're gonna check.
Bo and I held a mayor's slash city managers' summit a week and a half ago?
Let me make this right.
Where we invited all the small mayors and city managers from the county to come up and just, we, we hosted it with Red Bank and Walden, Bill Trohanis and then John Roberts from Red Bank. We fed everybody, we, and talked about issues that are facing the smaller towns in the county. I talked about how we can better support our city managers to, to, to help them do a better job on their job and outweigh them down type thing, and we just shared a lot of ideas and thoughts. It was very educational, I thought, and my guess is we've kind of passed the baton and hopefully one of the other smaller city managers will host the next one and maybe do this like quarterly. But I thought it was, I thought it was very informational. I think everybody really enjoyed it. Would you say so?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The other part of that is they are represented not by Davis-Lundy anymore, but have someone else representing them, and I've got kind of approached twice for us to consider joining that group again, like we were.
Maybe.
I was the small mayor of the small towns, the mayors from the small towns.
There was probably, maybe before...
It was probably before...
It was what's called the Small Cities Coalition in, in Hamilton County, where when we were starting facing some issues at state level, they...
Then there was an issue on the sales tax, too, right?
They basically hired public relations lobbyist type person and everyone except Signal Mountain Walden shares in that cost.
Wasn't Walden involved?
No, that turned it down.
Do you know? No? Okay.
The dude, what did they want to chalk him or what they wanted to chalk?
It was, I think an hour before, it was like 20,000.
20,000, yeah, that's what it was.
They've hired somebody else and the lady was there. She asked to be invited and, and Carol Lamb or somebody said, can we bring her? And I said, absolutely, but just understand that it's, you know, it's the conversation between mayors and city managers as opposed to... And she came, I met her, she was very neat, nice lady. I was a lot happier with her than, than the former person they had employed, and I've got pressure from two or three to consider joining their coalition, and I said I would